All right. All right.
Meeting every 10 minutes.
Welcome, everybody. Everybody looks ready to go. Malibu Planning Commission Regular Meeting of August 1st, 2022. This meeting is being held at teleconference due to the COVID-19 pandemic. Commissioners and city staff are participating in this Zoom meeting from remote locations. All votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu cities.org/virtualmeeting. At that screen, click on one of two tabs to either watch or sign up to speak on particular items. Those wishing to speak must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Please sign up before the item has been called by the chair. Those wishing to defer time to someone else intending to speak are not required to sign up, but must be present in the meeting. If instead of speaking, you wish to donate your time to another speaker, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen when the public hearing for the item is open. A speaker may accept up to five additional minutes, one minute each from each speaker that defers time, for a maximum total of eight minutes. Just a reminder that we may not recognize the raised hand button if somebody's trying to make just an offhand comment or question, but we may ask people for specific, to answer specific questions. Okay, may we have a roll call, please, Rebecca?
Yes, Commissioner Jennings.
Here.
Commissioner Mazza.
Here.
Commissioner Whitten.
Here.
Vice Chair Smith.
Here.
Chair Hill.
Here.
You have a quorum.
And Commissioner Jennings has a new bright blue background.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, approval of the, approval of the agenda, anybody, please?
I'm moving the agenda with item 5B, continue to enter the game uncertain.
I'll second.
All right, roll call, please.
Commissioner Mazza.
Yeah, yes.
Commissioner Jennings.
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten.
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith.
Yes.
Chair Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries.
And a report on the posting of the agenda, please.
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on July 22nd, 2022.
All right, thank you. I believe that takes us on to item 2A, public comment. Do we have any speakers on matters within our jurisdiction?
Yes, we do. At this time, could you open the microphone for J.R. Rucker? He might be, oh, there he is, J.R. Rucker.
Hello, how you doing?
Good.
How you doing? Thank you for. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Can we hear you? Is that Mr. Rucker?
Yeah. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, awesome. Yeah, you can call me J.R. My formal name is Dr. Jerome Rucker, J.R. Rucker. Just wanted to speak for a few seconds. I serve on committees and as an administrator and adjunct professor, I understand things happen, and so I'm, I know that I'm talking to a body of people that want what's best for, best for the city of Malibu. I'm not a resident of Malibu, but in my family and colleagues often come out to Malibu for retreats. Long story short, purchased nine tickets in addition to mine for some colleagues and myself that, that professors at USC to come out to this Jazz Fest. And I didn't know anything about the promotion, but I did know about the great city of Malibu. And so it's kind of like, if you imagine Disney putting something on, you, you just have faith in that brand. And so obviously, things went awry. Nobody could anticipate it would happen, but I just wanted to let, you know, this body know that it was brutal. In the, in the future, if you ever have any doubt, I was told, I read from the notes that there actually was an appeal because it was denied initially. If this ever comes up again, please lean towards being, being safe. I spent over, you know, from the Airbnb to, to travel, taking care of my colleagues. It was my thank you for all that they do. I spent close to $5,000. And to the way it was just, it wasn't safe for people to walk the grounds, gravel everywhere, holes, there were bugs on the ground. Obviously, the promotion was fraudulent, and that person who put on the event is definitely something I don't respect. I'm gonna get my attorney to see if we can proceed, but if, if this body could help me in any way with information regarding the whereabouts of this person that put on the event, I greatly appreciate it. Again, love the city of Malibu, frequent with my family and colleagues over the years for retreats, but this right here was the worst event I've ever seen in my life, my 46 years of living. And I just want the body to know that please don't co-brand with anyone that has any doubt moving forward because it costs a lot of people, a lot of money.
Thank you, Mr. Rucker.
We will, we will likely have reply comments after we've heard from all of the public.
At this time, if there's anyone else present in the meeting who wishes to provide comment on items not currently on the agenda, please click the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen to indicate. And seeing none.
Okay, then that takes us, closing the public comment and bringing it up to the commission for commission comments. Raised hands, anybody? Let's see, John's first.
Well, I didn't see anybody trying. All right, first I want to comment to Mr. Rucker that we had a planning commission meeting on this, I believe, last Thursday. Will be on our web, the staff report for that is, will be on our website. The city's website under planning commissions agendas, you can look that up, it's The city's website under planning commissions agendas, you can look that up. It's got all the material that was submitted in there. You probably will find out what you need in there. And if not, you can always call our planning department, the names of the people that were involved in this permit, and we were not co-branders, by the way, we just permitted the use of the property. And they tried to make sure it was patrolled properly. So that information is available. I'd like to comment, I did not go to the event. I don't knew nobody that went. But I'd like to comment a little bit on the hearing. I understand, I understand why it was called and that it was hastily put together reasonably well by the planning staff. I was just very, very surprised that the left hand apparently didn't know what the right hand was doing, especially when we found out during the hearing that that the Public Works Department had approved it five days prior. And we were told it had not been approved. So I hope in the future when we do at least TUPs that involve potentially a lot of people. Uh, there's some kind of meeting ahead of time to make sure everything's been covered, department heads meeting. Just to save us and staff a lot of time. That's basically a thank you.
Okay, Dennis.
Yes, I'm sitting here and I'm feeling Director Malika, it seems to be pushing something sharp into my side right here after this little fiasco that we just heard about. Yeah, I think I know what that is too. I'll try and get over this. I'll be waiting a minute. So yeah, that sucks. That's all I got to say. No good deed goes unpunished. Thank you.
Others? No, okay, well, I have a few. I'll follow on that one for Dr. Rucker and the community in general. Oh, Mark, I see your hand there. You want to go ahead?
Well, I just just a brief comment that I didn't attend the event, but I did drive by midday and it looked like they were not anywhere close to being ready to go. I had dinner that evening with a friend that had stopped in and actually wanted to attend and he said it was so disorganized and so forth that he finally just gave up and and left. So for whatever that's worth. That's it. Okay, thank you. My own comments, I'll address a few different things here before we open it up for Richard's comment because I'm sure he'll have plenty to say, but I received Friday night, I received two different phone calls from people in short order saying that they had looked at the website and saw they were still advertising alcohol. And so I sent an email to Richard and various city staff, including Stephen McClary, saying, you know, what's the deal here? Does does this imply that the permit still needs to be revoked again? Because this it was an express condition of our attempt to rehabilitate the permit. And I got an email on Saturday saying from Stephen McClary, maybe I misunderstood it, but it sounded like don't need to reply to this. Don't don't worry about this email, just like let things happen as they're going to happen. It was I'm not quoting it now, I'm just sort of paraphrasing. And that was surprising. I felt like that that was something that maybe code enforcement should have gotten in on right away. And it's frustrating when something that big falls through the cracks like that and when somebody else tries to put up a little retaining wall that's like two loose blocks of height and it's not retaining anything really. And they get nabbed by code enforcement. So just seems like a big discontinuity in terms of what gets enforced and what doesn't. Someone will explain that for me. Other other points, I'm still a little fuzzy about what the value of the minutes are that we're going to be looking at momentarily, or maybe not looking at it as a consent item. But if I recall correctly, Travis told me that the official record is now the video. So I sort of wonder what is the exact purpose of the written minutes and can we improve our review of that in any way? For example, could the written minutes be more like a guide to the video, like a table of contents? So, you know, say just be a written sheet that says this item is addressed at hour two, minute thirty or whatever. Let's see what else. Coming up, we have the Coastal Commission review of the hosted short-term rental ordinance that their review will be on Friday, August 12th. At some point in their agenda on that day. Thank you, Christopher, for posting a letter on the Malibu Times. Advertising that hearing, I think it would be helpful to more often get published letters about what's going on in the city in advance. One thought I have, and this is for a question for staff about it is you know, apparently coastal's concern is that we're supposed to be visitor serving, and that's what short-term rentals do. And we shouldn't be denying that. And it strikes me that our visitor serving is of a different character that we serve, I don't know, hundreds of thousands of Southern California residents per year. Basically daytime visitors. They're not people that come to stay overnight, but nonetheless, we are serving probably, I don't know, the highest per resident capita, the highest visitor serving ratio of resident capita of pretty much anywhere in California. We have a lot of visitor pressure on us already. And so I wonder if there are any numbers to support an argument to the coastal commission that says, look, we don't necessarily need all these overnight spaces because we're doing our duty here, our due diligence, or however you frame it, in the daytime. We we're taking care of a lot of visitors here already. So anyway, it's just a thought, maybe that somebody can help develop that argument better. And I think that's what I have on my own comments. So thank you. Any further comments? And if not, then let's go to Richard and see, I may maybe you probably want to leave.
Just saying.
Well, I, yeah. Well, I just to to follow on your comment about the ADUs. You know, I think we're in a unique situation here and you know, I think it's a question of, you know, we're in a unique situation where we have a lot of expensive property here and some of these ADUs that are going to be built or most of the ADUs. I have a my fear is is that are going to be really guest houses for people with big properties that you know, just get get more latitude. You know, on the building codes and they're not going to be, you know, they're not going to support low income housing at all. So that that it's my thought.
Well, and on that note, I just asked staff if there's a way to develop numbers on how we serve visitors. There's also a call to develop numbers on how our neighborhoods are being, the neighbors are being sucked out of our neighborhoods in effect. And you know, we've got, we've got the STRs, we've got Pacasa is a bigger presence. We've got real, real estate investment trusts. A whole range of things are taking neighbors out of neighborhoods. And I wonder if we have numbers, if they're helpful numbers that show how what proportion of that change from neighborhood to anonymous neighborhood is due to short-term rentals specifically versus other stuff like real estate investment and third homes and that kind of thing. John?
Well, I just want to point out that this is not ADU related, it's short-term rental related. ADU is a different issue. And that's a supposedly low income non-rental properties. Our, our ordinance we're proposing with the coastal commission has an element that requires a hosted rental, which quite frankly could use ADUs for the host to stay in, but where this is mostly short-term rental, this is short-term rental ordinance. And we'll see what happens at the hearing. The city has sort of indicated no way we're going to go along with you and they're sort of indicating no way we're going to go along with the city. So it could be a pretty short hearing.
Yeah, it could be.
It should be watched by everybody in Malibu because this is our future.
Okay. If there are no other comments from commissioners or any new members of the public. Rebecca, just double check that.
Um, did the planning director wish to comment tonight?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah.
No problem. Thank you very much, Chair and members of the commission. Just a few announcements for everyone. Our next meeting is going to start at 5:30 to accommodate some of the materials that were continued from last month to this meeting. So this meeting being the the second meeting in in August. And that special meeting starts at 5:30 and and I'm sure you are all familiar with the protocols, but we would have to wrap up those items by 6:30. So then we could then convene the regular meeting at 6:30. And then also something to put a bug in everyone's ears is to start thinking next month would be around the usual time that we elect a chair and new vice chair. So that's something for the commission to take action on and start thinking about. And on the issue of short-term rentals. As was brought up by the commissioners this evening, the coastal commission has a hearing next Fri- they have a their their meeting is in Calabasas at King Gillette Ranch. They have three days worth of hearings starting next Wednesday. Our item will be heard on Friday. And at this time, the coastal commission is recommending denial of the changes from what the city is proposing. It's primarily because we are proposing it to be a hosted short-term rental ordinance. They have concerns that that qualification qualifier will diminish the amount of short-term rentals in the city. We are preparing a comment letter that will be sent to the coastal commission because we have some concerns with the data that they use in the report. We don't believe that it's quite accurate and clearly reflects the situation in the city. I do think that Cherry Hill brings up a valid point that when it comes to the daily load, I guess you could say of visitors that come to the city. Yes. There are probably, if you were to do something of one visitor per, or excuse me, one resident per visitor ratio. I am quite certain that we probably exceed a lot of cities when you when you look at that way, and especially because of the amount of folks that flock to Zuma Beach. I don't know how it's been in recent years with COVID. But in the past years, for example, the LA County beaches and harbors and the lifeguards have actually done surveys of the amount of folks that show up to the beach. So they have an idea of the patronage on the beach. So we definitely can bring that stuff up. I know that the coastal commission from talks with them. They are very concerned with overnight accommodations. And for example, I am politely reminded of the loss of the prospective campsites next to Bluffs Park. I'm sure some of the commissioners here recall that. You know, they felt those were prime campgrounds that the the city prevented from being made available to the public. So they definitely have a concern about overnight accommodations and we definitely will do our best to make sure that what the council directed staff to do is heard and will present some information to them. And I don't disagree with Commissioner Whitten that I think that there may be some abuse as folks try to use our ADU ordinance as a way to perhaps increase short-term rentals. I do think that there there might be some issues, you know, like anything, there's always a few folks out there who look to capitalize on a situation and there might be an issue there which begs an enforcement questions. That's something we definitely will have to look at. Ideally, those units, if they were created through that all the states ADU provisions would be deed restricted. So there is some bite there for enforcement folks. And lastly, on the Jazz Fest that took place this weekend, we've received a number of phone calls, emails. They range just from folks wanting to understand what took place to people asking the city for refunds. The city has prepared a press release explaining the history of it and the city's relationship to it, and that being that we were a permitting body and also a facility renter, but not a co-sponsor or any way involved in the promotion of this event. That press release has a bit of the history. As I understand that there was some confusion over where the event was to take place. Concerns over, you know, what was being sold there. So that is in a press release. In addition, of course, public records requests, the materials are all public. And also, yes, there was an issue with the lack of communication between departments regarding the parking. And we have since I brought the city manager on board with that and shared that information with the city manager. And both the public works director and I have had a discussion and we've actually been looking at ways to put out paperwork differently through the department. Because we were able to confirm that that material did not make it from essentially downstairs to the upstairs, other corner of the building. So that is something we're working on. And then I also just want to be clear on the concern about alcoholic beverages. We did two scans of their website. And what we found on Friday was that their website was advertising access to a bar. We made contact with the event promoter both over email and over the phone. And we explained, you can't have a bar, you can't serve alcoholic beverages. His response was that the bar served water, Gatorade, no, obviously, take it with a grain of salt. That's what he said. We documented that. I sent him a follow-up email to confirm that conversation, which he did. And we also then had staff onsite on Saturday, there were folks there from our community services division or department to make sure that he did stick to that because we had it documented. And if there were any observations of him providing alcohol, we'd be able to follow up with code enforcement. So there we did see that in the afternoon, was some follow-up. The community services development or community services department director and I both were, I guess you could say, online Saturday evening. So just to kind of see what was going on and kind of, you know, see if there's anything that needed immediate attention. I do hope that my email did make it to you, Chair Hill, about that matter. If not, be more than glad to follow up with you. And also, just for anybody watching, if there are code violation concerns after hours, please do, please do use our code enforcement hotline on the weekends. I know right now my code enforcement staff is pretty much functioning at 50% capacity. We've lost a couple of our members to other cities. And it seems like the folks I have because of COVID, we've kind of had to slim down and luckily now everyone's back, but I feel like we've been operating at about 50% capacity and they've been working a lot. My overall goal with code enforcement is that I'm trying to bring on some more officers. I'm having a problem actually getting folks to show up for interviews. But my goal is to get them on board and the the real hope that the code enforcement manager Doug Clevenger and I have is that we're able to get seven day a week code enforcement because I know that's something that this commission has brought up. It's also something a few council members have brought up and we really want to try to do that. But in the meantime, if folks please use the code enforcement hotline. If there's a noise complaint, party, whatever it may be, please make sure you report that to the sheriff's department. So it's documented. With that, Doug does follow up with the sheriff's department every Monday morning so that we get a list of complaints and he does follow up on those. I'm available for any questions and thank you for the time. I know that was kind of a long one this time.
That Richard is.
Sorry about the fork.
Is the hotline prominently noted on the city website?
At last, I checked, it was up on the front page, but I can definitely double check that for you, Chair.
Okay, I might have a comment or two, but John, your hand has been up for a while.
Yeah, a couple of things, one suggestion to Richard for employees is we have some retired sheriffs that were very, very familiar with Malibu. Like Officer Wynn, who retired about a year and a half ago. They may want to double dip a little. So you may want to on the pensions, you may want to ask Lieutenant C2 if there are any of those around. On the hearing at the coastal commission hearing. the Coastal Commission hearing, they have a notice out that at this, basically the same time we're having our hearing, they're having a seminar on sea level rise, which is super important for Malibu. And I just wondered if if that, that's what they have posted. I just don't know whether they're actually going to have them overlap each other. Do you have any idea?
I, I, yes, I do, Commissioner. I I have a bad feeling it's overlapping from what I've been able to see. I'm so what I've done, I'm going to actually I'm working, Joyce and I are going to comment for the city on the STRs. And I believe our coastal engineers, along with my senior planners are going to attend the workshop on sea on the the sea level concerns. But I I do believe from looking at the agenda, I I think it's they might, and I, I guess my initial read is that they might overlap. So that's what we are going to be at both.
Do you know if they're going to broadcast the sea level rise seminar? So we could watch it?
My
Bring it back up and watch it again or something?
My understanding is that it will be online. And I will look, I I don't believe there's anything about it that's not public, but let me have a talk with my staff. Perhaps we can put a link to that on our department webpage for those who are interested.
Thank you.
Okay, and just to try, I know we don't want to flog a dead horse here, but just to reply to Richard, and this might be helpful for Dr. Rucker or anyone listening. It sounds like the alcohol thing is two different issues. It's when you advertise a for VIP, you get access to a private bar. In the absence of any other qualifying language like salad bar or juice bar, that implies alcohol. And in, so there then the two issues are, one, are they actually serving it? In which case, if they weren't, then yeah, maybe we don't have that permit violation. But they do still have sort of a false, it's false advertising issue. That's not the city's direct concern. But for the people who paid good money to do that, it does raise a big issue there. So just to clarify, that seemed like two separate issues. All right. Somebody had a hand up. It's no longer up, so we'll move on. We are to the consent calendar. We have one item on it, the approval of minutes, item three B one. Does anybody need to pull that? Mark, I see your hand up.
Well, I I wasn't on the Commission when those that meeting took place. Do I, should I just recuse myself during? Or or do I just abstain from the vote?
Stay.
Yeah, you could just abstain.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I move, we accept the minutes.
I'll second it.
Motion and second vote, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Wetton for the record, if you could.
I abstain.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Okay, in in that case, we are now on to continued public hearings, item four A. This is at three, one, 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 three, Baylord Road. It's a coastal development permit. I suspect the staff report is going to read all this anyway, but Woolsey Fire Number twenty-two dash zero, zero, six, variance numbers twenty-one dash zero, one, three, twenty-one dash zero, one, four, and twenty-two dash zero, zero, eight, an application for replacement driveway and construction of new retaining walls, two car garage decking and non-exempt grading over one thousand cubic yards. This is continued from the July eighteenth meeting. Staff report, please.
Excuse me. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the Planning Commission. So this project was actually scheduled to fill up. Unfortunately, he's on vacation, well deserved vacation, so I will be giving the presentation on his behalf. The project before you is a coastal development permit application for the driveway and fire department turnaround needed for a house and attached garage that were previously approved as the Woolsey Fire rebuilt. The original driveway and fire department turnaround application was submitted as an administrative plan review with the requested variances. However, due to a Coastal Commission staff correspondence regarding their disagreement with the city's approach on stacked process related to fire rebuilds, the owner agreed to upgrade the application to a coastal development permit in order to keep the app, the project moving forward. Next slide, please. So shown here is the vicinity map on the left and the aerial photo on the right. And the property on the right hand side is highlighted in the yellow lines is like a C shape lot with excuse me, with the driveway sort of in a flagstaff and then the house at the very top of the property there. Next slide, please. The proposed couple work consists of a coastal development permit with three variances all needed to comply with the fire department access requirements. The first variance is for construction on slopes deeper than two and a half to one. The second variance is for height of retaining walls over six feet in height, but not to exceed twenty-four feet, seven inches for a single wall and a combined height of thirty-two feet, one inch. The third variance is for non-exembrating over a thousand cubic yards, not to exceed two thousand one hundred and thirty cubic yards of non-exembrating. The fire department finally agree to the proposed driveway after many months of collaborating with them. And so the the design and the, you know, the design, the steepness and the width was you know, compromise with the applicant in order to design something that would fit within the property, but also the property as a fire rebuilt, the file department was willing to make some concessions in this case. Next slide, please. As stated before, the fire department approved the site's safety access. This is the approved fire department access plan demonstrating this approval. Next slide. Before the last planning commission meeting, Commissioner Maza had a question about two color coded slope analysis that were included with the project plans. These two maps were different in scale and may have appeared to have different information or different colors in the background. We provide the color coded slope analysis in two separate slides. So this shows the color coded slope analysis that was in one of the sheets. This doesn't have any of the proposed development and it shows the existing driveway. The next slide, when we get there, will show the proposed development in a reconfigured driveway. It's relocated and and, you know, different in width. So the if we can just get to the next slide, we can probably see the difference between these two. And again, the colors in the background should be the same. So next slide. There we go. So this shows a proposed development. Part of the application includes a variance for construction on steep slopes. Most of the proposed development is on steep slopes related to the driveway turnaround and associated retaining walls. However, the previously approved attached garage is also located within steep slopes as well as portions of the five foot wide access around the residence. The the requested variance is for all this development. The on, on steep slopes. Next slide, please. So here are a few photographs of the current building pad and driveway. We have the approved plans for the destroyed residence and we were able to verify the square footage, building pad elevation and other aspects of the project. Next slide. Next slide shows more pictures, but these pictures are of the driveway, the existing driveway, obviously. The proposed driveway is in a slightly different configuration and with, next slide. So this concludes staff's presentation. Staff supports the the adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash forty-four, approving the proposed project as condition. I'm available for any questions.
Craig? You need to get disclosures.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I was muted. Thank you, Adrian. Before we hear from the applicant and any public speakers, we do need to do disclosures. So, Mark?
Yeah, I I visited the site twice. And, you know, once when it was originally scheduled and then once just recently. I also, and and I met the expediter there, Susan Belame. Spoke with her. I spoke with Pat Healy on the phone about it as well.
Okay, did you didn't learn anything other than?
No.
Okay, John?
I I visited the site with Craig Hill prior to the
No, I I have not visited this with you.
It wasn't you. Oh, it was me, I guess. I was, okay. It's a long time ago. And I didn't learn anything that wasn't in the staff report, but I did understand the building pad. I also asked some questions from staff this on on an email and at around five thirty today, I got the answers or purported answers. And there was some information in there that I don't believe was in the staff report. It's two pages. I can read it to you. Or I can bring it up during the meeting as we go through it.
Patrick, is there, can you do that either way? Is that fine?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not necessarily necessarily sure a word for word reading is required. If you can kind of summarize it, that would be sufficient as well, Commissioner Maza.
Okay, I'll try that.
Let's do that when we get to comments because we may hear a bunch from the applicant and so forth. So we're we're going to forget what you tell us now if we don't.
You know, but 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 Chair Hill, I I think it is important for Commissioner Maza to do that now, should the applicant and or member of the public want to address it or?
Yeah, fair enough. Good. So can you summarize it, John?
Okay. I asked if there was anything that says the existing driveway cannot be used with the existing pad. And the answer was the applicant, basically applicant talked to the fire department and negotiated and agreed with a maximum driveway slope of twenty-two percent and an average of twenty. And the driveway was allowed to be sixteen feet wide. Now, that really didn't answer the question, but that's what I got back. The second one was the fire department ever requested to approve the as-built house. It's it's basically says that the fire department, it's the applicant's responsibility to obtain fire department approval. They negotiated. However, the fire department does not and will not approve and stamp plans that would not allow them for emergency personnel to access the structure. Didn't quite answer it. What is the policy on grandfathering? And why is this the first house we were ever seeing that needed a a CDP for the driveway and let's see. Says fire departments have been allowing to preserve some pre, some pre-existing conditions as a width and entry gates and and not feasible, were not feasible. However, we're concerned, there wasn't, they made a concerted effort to bring the turnaround the driving the turnarounds to as close as possible in this negotiation. So there's no definitive answer there. And then I asked if there was any calculation of the proposed driveway in the staff report and the answer was on sheet C two or five includes a slope percentage on the proposed driveway calculations are as so and so. The existing average slope was twenty, thirty percent. And the maximum elevation was one hundred and sixty-four feet. And then they said the proposed was one hundred and thirty-eight feet total rise. They gave a number for the driveway as one hundred and eighty feet, but it included the the pad, which is not the driveway. And they said the average was nineteen point one. I used the same numbers. It got thirty-one percent. Let's see. Is the street required to be widened the house or the whole street? And this is a fire department approval of the plans as shown without street widening. According to the applicant, was never brought up. Let's see, and I should disclose that Pat Healy called me and said she measured the street at fourteen feet. And I did talk to Pat Healy. I forgot like I had a semi brief conversation with her, nothing that I didn't learn anything new. The last one was and was there a calculation of how many loads truckloads of dirt and was there a pollution study? And they said there are fifty-two hundred and sixty cubic yards. And the average truck holds ten to twelve yards. That I'll have to confirm with Craig. And then they said they didn't, didn't have to do C four. That's basic.
Jeff? And who haven't, Dennis? Oh, your hand is up, yeah.
Yeah, boy, I'm glad we got to hear that because none of that made any sense. So.
That's why.
Yeah, I I I I heard some numbers there. I started to make some sense of it, but it was a little bit confused.
I'll bring it up.
Okay. Richard, did you want to say something before I do disclosures?
Thank you very much, Chair. I was just going to say, though, if you would like, Adrian would be more than glad to clarify anything or answer any of those questions further, if perhaps there was some additional information the Commission was looking for. But we'd be glad to do that. Just wanted to let you know.
Okay, and then on on my own disclosure. I visited the site. I spoke with Pat Healy probably a couple of times and with Debbie Decray, the neighbor there. I don't think I learned anything that wasn't in the staff report, or at least if I did, I don't recall it now. I also was, I don't remember now how I was connected with the expediter on the additional grading, but he sent me photographs of the work, the one they had done the grading, the post-Woolsey grading. And those photos were circulated to you all, I think, before the last meeting. So what I saw there was that the they graded it down several feet below what the existing pad had been, which thereby extended the width of their pad by probably several hundred square feet. And I had some questions for staff. I think some of them were answered. One of them was not that what I wanted to see an exhibit comparing the slopes of the driveways, like some sort of elevation view or something, because I I just didn't understand the difference between the new and the old. And it sounds like John just got those numbers now. So hopefully, if we, as we go along, we can kind of understand a little bit better about what's been achieved with the the new driveway proposal. Okay, I I'm sure we all have questions, but we've done disclosures. I think it's time to let the applicant have their day in the sun here and then we'll hear if there are any other public speakers after that. Yeah.
Like to clear one thing up. The second map that was shown was the map of the lot. And it showed that the lot included the Baylord Road. Whereas there's a house right on Baylord Road, and I wanted to make sure that was correct because it changes the square footage.
That's a question for staff.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, I think it was your second slide.
There is a a C shaped lot. So there's a portion of the parcel that is basically an area immediately adjacent to to Baylor Road. Is that the question?
Yeah, so the house on Baylor Road is is not, does not own the road. The house above it does.
This property, I mean, if we can go back to maybe that slide, we can see it better.
John, I think the answer to your question is yes.
Yeah, I'm looking at this White House seat down at the bottom, and I would assume they owned the road, but. It just seems strange to me.
Yeah. The, yeah, you can see it here clearly that all of Baylor Road is on the subject property within the the frontage of the parcel.
Okay, let's move ahead and hear from the applicant. Rebecca, who do we have here representing them? Susan here?
So, representing the applicant team, we have Susan Belane of Uventures Planning and Permits, Jonathan Day of Caution Day Architects, Fred Gaines, attorney. Kevin Poffenberger, EPO Septic Engineering, Tricia Coffey of Asia Civil Engineering. And David and Kate Ellis, who are the owners. Originally, their plan was to be just available for questions. I would like to double check with Susan if any of them wish to speak. Make some initial comments, having heard what they've heard so far, or if they'd like to continue to defer the full fifteen minutes for rebuttal to public comment.
Susan, can we hear you?
I actually don't see Susan anymore. I saw her earlier, I thought, but I don't see her in the meeting now.
Susan, if you were with somebody else on you expecting to use their microphone, can you raise their hand, please?
Otherwise Fred Gaines is in the meeting with the group and perhaps he would like to respond to that?
Yeah, let's hear what Mr. Gaines has to say. Fred, are you there? Can we hear you? Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Honorable Members, Fred Gaines, Gaines and Stacy. I think that. I think our engineer is on the line and can answer the questions about the existing road. Commissioner Maza was reading a response that we had given today to some questions that he sent, and it went through. The existing driveway. Being eleven feet wide and thirty percent average. Tilt, whereas the, and that was not accepted by the fire department. Fire department did compromise with us, allow us the. Average nineteen percent. There is a stretch that's almost thirty percent. The existing one has a stretch. It's almost forty percent.
Mr. Gaines, Mr. Gaines, I'm sorry.
One at fifteen feet, one at fifteen feet wide. So I, but I wanted the engineer who did this. I did not do this. I, this was reported to me.
Could I just interrupt for a moment and ask, were you wanting to provide a response to that as part of your initial comments? Or would you like to hold your comments? Until after hearing the public speakers as originally noted?
Engineer, can you ask if she's on the line and and has direct comments to make? I don't mind using five or so of the minutes now if if we can.
Okay.
That question.
Tricia Coffey has raised her hand in the meeting. If you can open her mic.
Rebecca, we've, he's spoken now for about a minute, so please start the clock tolling and. And then, but let's hear from Tricia, please.
I assume everyone can hear me. Good evening, planning commissioners and staff. My name is Tricia Coffey. I'm the civil engineer who prepared the grading plans for this project. But for you, it's kind of an interesting project in the fact that the driveway is one of the steepest I've ever worked on in my entire career. And so the the driveway is extremely steep and. But the 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 issue is, is that the the house was burned down, so now the applicant is just trying to replace their home. So what what we're looking at here is is a negotiation. There was a negotiation that happened with the fire department. Typically, when I get involved in a project, I'm given a house and then I back in the driveway and kind of make everything else work. But this is a very unique project in the fact that I actually started the project and I worked on the driveway and gave them elevations. So that Jonathan could put together his house, you know, kind of building the house around the the driveway that would be. Acceptable through the fire department. So this is kind of a unique project in the fact that this driveway is is exceptionally steep. So kind of I just wanted to go over. What Commissioner Maza was discussing, which was the existing slopes and what's there now versus what is proposed. So the average slope of the existing road is approximately thirty percent of of thirty percent grade. So typically, the fire department wants your driveway at around fifteen percent. They'll take it up to, you know, eighteen percent, you know, without too much complaint, but. Thirty percent, that's that's exceptionally high. And that existing road has portions of it that have steepness of forty, of approximately forty percent, almost up to forty percent. So this driveway is exceptionally steep. So what the other thing to keep in mind is this driveway does not have fire department turning radiuses. The 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 turning radiuses are quite steep or quite short. And it doesn't have transition zones and all the things that the fire department wants to see in their driveway. So what we did was, what I did is I went in and I created a driveway that meets fire department standards. To the best of our ability. And when I started out the project, I actually created four different versions of driveways and we took it to. And Susan Velane actually took it to the fire department and went through the negotiation process there. So.
Tricia, Tricia, Susan's got her hand up here. I think maybe we need to hear from her a bit.
Absolutely. I am here if you have any questions.
The two of you can work out who who wants to address us. Susan, you you wanted to interject here something.
Hi, I'm so sorry. I am using my iPad this evening and I didn't know how to raise my hand. So I apologize for that. Can you hear me okay?
We can. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. So I'm sorry to interrupt Tricia because she is vital to understanding the complexity of. This property and what was. Involved with us trying to get the fire department to work with the city in order to approve. A driveway, the steepness of the existing driveway, as you all know, because you visited the property, is is. Really, really steep. And so we had to work with the fire department, the planning department. And we had to all come to a happy medium, which we did. And Tricia can go over. The parameters in which she had to sort of design. A driveway that would meet the. Maximum the fire department was going to allow us, which was twenty-three percent. And then she had to. Work with the grade of the elevation of Bayard as it enters the property. I believe, and Tricia, please help me explain this. In order for a fire truck to approach a driveway, it has to be gradual, otherwise the fire trucks is not, is going to bottom out, not going to be able to make it up the hill. So she had to work with that. Then she had to, she was on a flag lot. So she's got a narrow part of the flag lot that she had to work with. And then she had to, because the garage is at the lowest point of the property. Where it meets the front yard setback. She had that elevation. So between all that, she had to design something. That would meet the fire department's approval and then ultimately their stamps, which we do have. So. It was quite, quite an enormous feat, but it got done and and she can take it from here and sort of fill in the blanks.
Okay, Tricia, do you? Do you have more to add?
Yeah, I mean, I think I'm here if you guys have questions. I think I think I addressed all of the questions that I heard previously, but I'm I'm here if you have an additional, any additional questions.
Okay, great. Are there other members of the applicant team who want to speak now, or do you want to reserve time for after the public comment? I don't necessarily see hands, so.
I believe the intent was to reserve the remainder of time for to follow public comment. Susan does have her hand up now.
Rebecca, that is correct. And I am representing the applicant team. We are going to reserve our time.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then you have eight minutes and fifty-three seconds remaining. And with that, we will hear from any other public speakers.
So we will be hearing from Pat Healy first, followed by Deborah Decray.
Okay, Pat, are you here?
And while Pat's microphone is being opened, if there are other members of the public present in the meeting who wish to provide comment, please indicate so by using the raise hand button at the bottom of your screen.
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Pat Healy, and I just wanted to give a minute of my time to Deborah Decray. And I believe, help her, she's new to the computer and new to Zoom, so if she has trouble being unmuted, please help her. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Pat. Deborah, we'll try to get you on here if you can hear us. Open her microphone.
Yeah, thank you, Deborah. And you will, you will have four minutes, but if you could give me just a moment, I'm going to reset your clock. All right, and we are ready for you.
Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you, commissioners. My name is Deborah Decray. This Wolsey Fire rebuild is directly above my house on a very steep slope. And I'm concerned about the destruction to my property and the hillside and the environment. I am strongly opposed to granting the three after-the-fact variances. None of these are necessary if all the rebuilding is put in the original location. And this would be the least damaging alternative to the environment. You have my written comments and concerns, so I'll try to summarize. Since this is a fire rebuild and not a new project, the most logical and least environmentally damaging design is to keep the rebuild on the existing already graded pad. And keep the infrastructure in its original location. Staff indicated that the owner would be wanted to rebuild on the existing pad. But the fire department wants to move the path of the parking hammerhead turnaround down slope. Below the existing one. There is already a fire department-approved hammerhead turnaround. Which was undamaged in the fire. There is no indications or documentation showing staff or the fire department explored or considered. Or turned down the existing undamaged. Approved hammerhead turnaround pad. The proposed one is, looks to be the same as the existing one. It's just moved down the hill. And it doesn't provide any better fire access. Per the slope analysis, the existing driveway is not as steep as the proposed one. Because it serpentines across the property. And the proposed one, part of it goes straight up the hill, so it's much steeper. And I think that the commissioners who have seen the property. You know, understand what that looks like. The driveway is accessed by a fourteen-foot-wide private road and. The, that diagram before showing that the applicant owns part of that road is not right. Theirs goes straight down to that. Small end of the flag. And our road is not on the easement. We put it inside the easement. The easement is down toward the condos, but we put it inside the easement, so it is a private road and each. Each part of the road belongs to the house above it. Anyway, the existing driveway is twelve to fifteen feet wide per the staff report. Therefore, fire trucks and equipment must access the fourteen-foot-wide private road to get to the driveway. And so it should be sufficient, but if not, it can always be added on the sides and avoiding a lot of. Excessive grading and more additional retaining walls. By keeping the existing undamaged fire department-approved hammerhead turnaround driveway and septic in their original locations. It would allow the garage and the septic to be on the original pad and we preclude the need for a four-story. Elevator, a four-story stairways and a four-level house. The original house is two stories. This would reduce grading and additional retaining walls. The undamaged septic system was assessed after the fire to be in working order and could be upgraded in its current location. The total grading, I think, as shown on the last staff report was something like fifty-four hundred cubic yards, which is about five hundred and forty. Dump trucks going up our fragile, already. Deteriorating road from all the after-fire trucks that have been up there.
Deborah.
Deborah, you are in time.
Deborah, Deborah, your time is up, but if you give us your last concluding sentence, please.
Okay, well, I'm concerned about impermeal surfaces and we also want conditions when a plan is approved. We want. Additional conditions that they were in my letter, in my written comments.
All right, thank you for your time. With that, with that, we'll return to the applicant team. Let me just double check that there are no other hands raised. All right. And with that, we will return to the applicant team. If you could open Susan Belane's microphone.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Hi.
Yeah.
Um, I am going to have Tricia respond to this. So Tricia, please, can you? Answer. What Deborah raised.
Sure, I assume you guys can hear me here.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so a couple of things. I know that Deborah had some concerns about why we, why we didn't wind the road up and that's going to make the road shorter. It's absolutely a fair statement. The reason why we took the road path that we did is because the fire department has. A very fairly large turning radiuses that we can that we can have on a driveway. And the existing roadway, although it, you know, provided a nice circuitous path up the hill. It doesn't have the turning radiuses that you would need in order to provide fire department access. So that's why you kind of see the rounded. Entrance up to the straight path up to the fire department turnaround. Another concern that was raised that I wanted to address was the location of the fire department turnaround and why it's not sitting up on top. Where the, where you could say that there was maybe a fire department turnaround, although although it wasn't quite big enough up on top. Couple of reasons why it is where it is. The portion of the driveway that. That it would have fit, first of all, our fire department turnaround is much larger than what what it would have fit on the existing pad. So and what you see there is up on on that corner, it's quite steep. So when I push that fire department turnaround up into that corner of the property, it's digging into the property even deeper. So in order to try to minimize walls, we chose this location for the fire department turnaround. And really, it's, it was based on. The fact that the existing driveway is much steeper and we chose, and we were given a, essentially, we have a maximum slope for the road. And then that's essentially where the fire department turnaround falls. The other item that I wanted to address was there's been discussions. I think there was a map that was shown on the drawing as far as. Where exactly the roadway falls. And I would just encourage you to take a look at the survey. I think the slope analysis that was shown was on the survey, and that's going to give us the most accurate representation of exactly where the easements are. I think maybe on the picture. It looked like maybe it was a little bit off as far as the the underlying. Picture versus the property lines. So I would just encourage you to take a look at the survey from obviously the licensed surveyor. Who's going to give you the exact width of the roadway and the location of the roadway. The last item that I that I did want to address is the grading quantities. Obviously, we are asking for a variance on this property. So this is. We do have more grading than that, you know, so we are obviously asking for a variance and we we do have large retaining walls. So we do have more grading than what is typical on a project that I see in Malibu. I'm just going to reserve the rest of my time. I believe there's another member of our team who wanted to speak as well.
Okay. Stop the clock. Yeah, I don't I don't see any other hands up. Are there hands up from?
Put your hand up.
Mr. Gaines, yes.
Thanks very much.
Thanks very much, Mr. Chair, and all the members. David and Kate Ellis have lived in Malibu for a long time. Their house burned down three and a half years ago. They want to rebuild the house. They have absolutely no interest in spending something between 700 and maybe even up to a million dollars to build this driveway. But that's what they've been told that they need to do. And it was a compromise. We're still at an average over, I think, a little over 20% grade. There's 30% grade areas, but that replaces a narrow, winding, 30% average grade with 40% grade driveway. There was talk about a previously fire department-approved turnaround. This was an older house. There's no record that there was any fire department approval for anything at that time. But regardless, this is what the fire department wants, and we're able to fit it in there. The house has already been approved. It's in plan check. And we have a number of letters of support from other community residents. In, in a lot of respects, this is all safety grading. I know that, well, I don't want to get into an argument over what's exempt and non-exempt. We're accepting the staff's current view on this as stated in the staff report. But the only reason we're doing this grading is to build the road and the turnaround, the driveway and the turnaround that the fire department has approved. And so that's, that's really what you have in front of you is can these people go forward? After going through the process, you could talk to your own staff about whether this is something they made up in order to get a few extra square feet, or whether they're doing this because the fire department's requiring them to do it. And that's exactly what has occurred here. And we, when they started this process, they didn't think they were going to need any variances. Turns out with the way that it's been calculated and recalculated, they need these, these variances to build this project out at the approved stamped fire department-approved access. And we ask that this Commission allow it, allow that to go forward at this, at this point in time. You know, it's hard. I can't see the other members of my team as to whether they, anybody else has a hand up or not if they want to use the remaining few minutes. If not, we'll, we'll conclude.
Mr. Ellis has his hand up. David Ellis, welcome.
Yes, hello. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I just wanted to reiterate what our team said. I wanted to thank them, wanted to thank the Commission here. And, and as Fred said, Kate and I have lived in Malibu for 22 years. We didn't plan to have to rebuild our house. I'd actually love to agree with my neighbor Debbie and just have the old house back and not have to go spend a billion bucks to do a new driveway, but that's what I've been told I have to do. And we're just eager to get back into our house. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ellis. So the applicant team has a little over two minutes remaining. We'll, we'll leave it there. If we have any questions of you guys, you're here, we'll, we'll ask you questions on limited issues. And we'll bring this back up to the Commission table. Commissioners, who's got a hand up? John?
I just want to do part of my questioning now, so while it's fresh, and the engineer is here.
Yeah, and let, and let's just make a point of, of asking, you know, if we have some technical questions and clarifications now before we get into a lot of deliberation, let's, let's, let's get.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, because obviously, this, this is a very, very unusual variance with 30-foot retaining walls. Now, first I want to ask Adrian, is, you mentioned that they, they brought it to the planning commission because it was not 110% rebuilt, or is this 110% rebuilt?
The item is before you because of the variances. So the.
It is 110%?
So it's 110 or less. And, and the house and the attached, you know, garage were approved as a separate application. And so the driveway is actually was before you. Now, the other kind of unique part of this project is that the, you know, the, where the garage sits, it's on varying slopes. And the same with portions of the five-foot walkway around the house. And so those are also aspects that are before you today. But the house, you know, that was something that was already approved by the planning department.
So the two together are 110% or less? The house and the garage?
The house and the garage combined square footage is 110 or less, correct?
Okay. The reason I'm, I want to talk to the engineer is, well, first, Susan Valon mentioned that, and this is a question for Susan, that you were allowed a maximum of 23% grade on the driveway. Is that true?
I think that's.
I believe that is what the driveway ended up being designed at. And I believe that's what the fire department approved, the stamped fire department plans are, is 23%. It does not exceed 23%.
Okay, because, okay, then let me ask the engineer. Was it Julie? Tricia, okay. The word maximum is important because a truck going up a hill doesn't care what's behind it or in front of it as long as it's, it's not over a certain amount, it won't hang up. And you had mentioned that there were areas of this that were 30%. Is that correct?
Are you talking about existing driveway or?
No, I'm talking about the final driveway.
Proposed driveway?
Yes.
The proposed driveway, the max slope is 22%.
Okay, now, what I don't understand, and I like to look at a couple references, Adrian referred me to his mathematics, which he gave me, where, and I want to see if these are correct with you, where that the new proposed driveway had a total rise of 34 and a half feet. That's, that's from 7172, five, top of driveway to 138, bottom of driveway. And the, the maximum run was 180 feet to the retaining wall.
That's correct.
Okay, and that gave him 19.1%. Okay, now my question, and if people would look at G2 of 5 in your plans, what does the calculation, why would the calculation include the fire department turnaround that is flat? It has nothing to do with the slope of the road, does it?
Well, it, if you're, if you would like me to give you the calculation of the road, it's, it's written on the plans. It says 22%, so that holds the grade at 22%. But then there's a transition zone into the fire department turnaround that goes from 22% to 12%, up to 2%, up to the retaining wall at the top.
Okay, and how did you, and I'd like Adrian to put up the two slides of the color slides of the slope, the two slopes, before and after. They're the same slopes. These are the existing slope, but the configuration of the driveway.
Would you like to see the one that has the developing, which would be the next one?
No, I just want to see this first, okay?
Okay, first one, okay.
This, the first one is, is more windy, okay?
Right.
So therefore it is longer. Is that correct?
It's not a question for me. That's correct.
Okay, and then the other one is shorter. So you're calculating the, the slope, average slope, by taking the bottom of the driveway up to the top of the driveway and, and, and the height and dividing them together. And that gives you 19.1, but the existing driveway is longer. So I don't know how the mathematics works out, that a longer driveway under the same rise comes up with a steeper slope. It's just fourth-grade arithmetic. How can you explain that?
Well, you have to understand that the existing driveway is going from 138 up to 198, right? And we're taking it from 138 up to 172.
198? This is 198 up here?
Yeah. Do you see the contour? I can't see. The pad at the top is approximately sitting at around 198. That's a, that's a rough number. Obviously, that pad is varied, but.
Okay.
So what we're doing there is although our road is shorter, we're not going as far, we're, 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 obviously, we have, you know, 28-foot-tall retaining walls there, so we're actually coming into this pad. So, and the reason, and I'll reiterate what I said before, the reason why we don't have this circuitous driveway is, is because we can't have it with our turning radiuses that are required for today's fire department apparatus.
So you're lowering the pad 20 feet?
From 198 to 172.
So Commissioner Mazza, it's, it's not the entire pad. It's, it's the pad for the garage, as, as you know.
No, no, what I'm saying is, a flat surface is not a road going up a hill. So you have to measure from the top of the road, not from the back of the retaining.
That's, that's right.
If you want to get the average. So the number you gave me is not, that came out to 19.1, but there's about 20 more feet missing. So I don't know how you got under 20.
It's 20 feet missing, but that's the difference between where they're lowering the garage elevation versus the building path for the house that will remain in the same elevation.
No, no, I hear your misunderstanding. I'm going from the top of the road to the back of the retaining wall. That's what I'm talking about. That cannot be counted in the road. Now.
I'm not following.
It makes no sense.
Road is from the street to the pad. It's not from the street to the back of the pad, okay? That's how you measure an angle.
We're only going to the garage, Commissioner Mazza. That's all we're doing tonight. That's all the farther we're going.
This is the slope of the road.
And if you understood what you were trying to say, you wouldn't be saying it.
No, I understand what you're saying. You don't understand what I'm saying. The maximum slope is calculated from the bottom of the driveway to the top of the driveway, okay? Not the flat path.
So just to clarify for Commissioner Smith, he's saying, he thinks that, John is saying he thinks the hammerhead, which is basically level, almost level, is, has been included. His question is, is that included in the averaging of the slope, or, or is that not included? Right, John?
Yeah, and I'm saying, in, in my answer from staff, it was included, okay?
And, and so what conclusion do we draw from that? I mean, I, you want to talk about the arithmetic, but what does that mean? What, what, what's the relevance of that?
Well, that means your, your numerator is, your denominator is shorter, okay? If you're dividing 111 feet by 20.
And so you're saying the engineer got the arithmetic wrong?
I'm saying the staff did. I'm, I'm not accusing the engineer of anything, okay?
And so if the engineer was right and the staff got it wrong, what difference does it make?
Well, we got to see if the engineer got it right.
Let, let, let me re, let, let me reframe the question here, because I think in terms of our review, what's important, we understand that the fire code says nominally you get 15% grade. And we've heard on multiple projects that with exceptions, special circumstances, whatever, it will allow up to 20% grade. And we had, if you recall, not long ago, a big to-do about this issue on the Weintraub property up at 33,000-something PCH, where the applicant had proposed something higher than 20. I think it was 22, in fact. And that was one of the reasons that both we and then the Council subsequently said, yeah, no, this is, this is too steep. This doesn't work here. So the question in my mind is, what did the fire department think they were approving such that they could get away with saying a 22%, 22% slope would, would be viable when nominally we've only ever heard that 20 is the max? So Adrian, maybe you could shed some light on that?
Well, again, I, I show the site plan that was stamped by the fire department. I mean, and as John Mazza mentioned, or Commissioner Mazza mentioned before, it is the, the applicant who interacts with the fire department. So if, if the planning commission would like staff to interact with the fire department to verify the information, we could do that, but that's not our policy. Our policy is obviously to request the applicant to get that information from the fire department and get their stamp. And that's essentially what was, what happened here. But I do want to make one point of correction. So the numbers that Commissioner Mazza is pointing to, those numbers came directly from the engineer. So those aren't my numbers. They were in my email, but I obtained those numbers directly from, from Tricia. So, and then I pour those on to you. But yes, the difference is the maximum, the maximum steepness of that, of that driveway is 22. They did include the turnaround, which lowers the overall average to 20%. And the fire department accepted that as complying with their requirement.
Okay, so Mike, so you answered a question that I want to calculate in your mind. You said that the total rise was 34 and a half feet, okay? And the total run is the 180 feet to the back of the retaining wall, okay? I want to know what the distance is, how wide the turnaround is.
Well, again, if you were to remove the turnaround, the steepness of the proposed driveway is 22%.
Well, let's calculate it out. How wide is?
That's the max, that's the maximum, that's the maximum steepness of the driveways. If you remove the turnaround, you would come to a 22% slope for the driveway. Whereas the existing driveway is 30%.
Is there a plan here that shows the turn, the width of the turnaround?
Dennis, let's, while we're looking for that plan, Dennis, yeah.
So when the engineer designed this, she had to change everything to flatten out the front end to get up the driveway. It's pretty steep. I got up there in my Chevy Colorado. It was difficult. The G-Wagon made it no problem because that's how the front end is. But these people drove up and down this hill for 22 years, it sounds like, probably not very easy. So what she's done is flattened this thing out and made it straight. Comes into the garage, comes up on top, so the fire department can come in to a fairly level pad. They're not going to get out of their trucks on a 22% grade and start rolling hoes. So when you get up to the top, that's what you have to do. So he, she transitioned that up to the top, flattens it out. That way, the fire department's there. The only thing we're talking about tonight is to the garage, and that's it. You got to have the retaining, hang on, you got to have the retaining walls because you're taking dirt out of this thing. And you need this, you need the sides to hold everything in.
This is mathematics.
I'm not sure where we're headed here. Wait, this is another fire rebuild. These people have been through hell, and you're trying to pick on something that makes no goddamn sense, period.
Well, if you, if you took fifth grade, you would know that I'm trying to work it simply so that people can understand it.
You, you don't know. That's the issue.
I do know.
Guys, 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 guys.
It's my, it's my question. On, on page AB2, it shows the turnaround is about 30 feet, okay? And so you take a rise of 34 feet and a half.
Terry Hill, he's wasting everybody's time here.
Yeah, John, 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 we have, I think we've established pretty clearly that the slope of the driveway is 22.
No, you have not. Where have you?
They have added in.
Where, where, where have you established that? What, where once does it say that?
John, what, John, what they have said is that they have included the hammerhead to get the average down below 20. The question that this raises then would be, what is the precedent? Do we ever, in terms of the driveway, count the hammerhead as part of that?
Let me, let me finish my statement.
Finish your statement.
The fire department said they would allow a maximum slope of 23%, okay? The applicant stated that. Maximum slope of 23%. Their truck can never be more than 23%, okay? So in 111, in the rise was 180 feet minus 30, 150 feet. So you go 34.5 divided by 150. A hundred and fifty feet, so you go thirty-four point five divided by a hundred and fifty. That's twenty-three. But that's the average slope. Okay? So my question of the engineer, is this slope always on average? And that's a question, because if it isn't, it exceeds it.
Okay, let's ask, Tr- Tricia, can you tell us just exactly what is the very steepest moment of that driveway?
Yes, thank you so much for letting me speak, I think this is helpful, so I think what we have to understand is it's, it's, it's not just a change in grade that's abrupt, so there has to be proper transition zones for the fire department.
Tricia, we want one number, what is the very steepest moment of the driveway?
Twenty-two percent. So can you see that on the plans in the middle of the road? So, so the way it works is it goes from the driveway down, from the entrance road down below, there's a transition zone. It raises all the way up to twenty-two percent until you reach the very start of the fire department turnaround, and fire department turnarounds, the whole thing, it's, it's seventy feet by fifty feet. But the interesting thing about fire department turnarounds is you can start your transition on a leg of the fire department turnaround, so that's why you see we go from twenty-two percent to twelve percent, up to two percent.
Okay, thank you, thank you, I think, I think we've answered the question, Jeff?
Yes, um, as staff has, has told us, we don't have in the LIP any standards for steepness of fire, of driveways. We rely on the fire department to tell us what they will accept. If the fire department won't accept it, then you have to do something else, you have to di- design it down, so I'm, I'm curious as to what the point of this discussion is, the fire department has accepted this one. Are, is the point that, uh, we think it's steeper than what the fire department thinks it is, and therefore we should deny this project? Because the fire department and the engineers have made mistakes, or where are we going with this? What's, what's the next phase of the argument?
I, I think, I think the argument would be that the fire department review sheet, uh, as, as I recall looking at it, appears to be for a Woolsey rebuild, and doesn't have a lot of detail on it, so notwithstanding we've heard this discussion that there was a lot of negotiation, that's not really reflected in the paperwork.
So, and, and so what, you think that, that this has all been dummeled up and, and, uh, there weren't negotiations with the fire department, and this isn't the, the best that the, that the fire department would allow?
I don't want to put words in John's mouth in his argument, but I do find it strange that we had such an issue about this on, on the wine truck thing not long ago, and suddenly here.
Two different things, this is a fire rebuild, they had to try and work with them.
Oh, no, 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 there's not two different things when you go into mathematics. The point is, I was just told on the calculations by Adrian, that his, he was told by the engineer, it was a hundred and eighty feet to the back of the retaining wall. The engineer just told me the, the, the fire department flat turnaround is fifty feet wide. Thirty-four point five divided by a hundred and thirty is twenty-six and a half.
And so?
So the fire department signed off on twenty-three percent. That's the problem. Okay, now, the reason I'm bringing this up is to do this, to rebuild this, this wall, we have to provide a variance for a house of a thirty-two foot high retaining wall combination, that's the same height minus two feet as the community college, it's huge. It's not, it's never been done before a Malibu for residents, ever, not even half of that. Okay, so that's why I'm saying, we have to look and make sure these numbers are right, because we are going through a million dollar project, a thirty-two hundred, a thirty-two foot high retaining wall, and fifty-four hundred cubic yards of grading.
Yep.
Which Dennis can tell us how many trucks that is.
About one fifty-four on the export.
What?
About a hundred and fifty-four trips to export.
A hundred and fifty-four trips, thirty cubic yards per truck.
Thirteen.
Okay, well thirteen and five, that's why you need to go to grade school.
Whatever, it's a lot, it's a lot of trucks.
A lot of trucks, a lot of trucks.
Fifty-four hundred divided by thirteen.
No, John, move on, it's a lot of trucks, forget it.
Four hundred and fifteen trucks.
You're wrong.
Okay, guys, stop it, come, John, mute John's microphone, mute John's microphone. Come on. We're, it's a lot of trucks, stipulate it, okay? We, it, we don't need to do the math on the, whatever. Jeff, just for your, for your edification, I'm looking at the fire department review sheet, and all it says about the project is reconstruction of driveway, new configuration, new retaining walls and new pool, fire rebuild. So, for all the negotiating we get, I, I don't see anything on here that says, well, you know what, normally we only allow up to twenty percent grade in special circumstances, but because of the situation, blah, 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 we're going to twenty-two or twenty-three. It's just.
Okay, so, yeah, okay, so the argument then is that the fire department, didn't fully understand what was going on, and that this plan that is before us is actually steeper, I guess, than the fire department really thought that they were approving.
That's, that's the wonder, yeah.
Okay, Susan's got her hand up, maybe she can explain it, so I, I think she did the negotiating.
Susan, can we hear from you as to why the, there's not more detail from the fire department?
Uh, the fire department plans got resubmitted to the fire department when, uh, the architect removed the swimming pool from the side of the house. Um, and subsequently, the, so the fire department's had two opportunities to review these plans, and, um, and they've been, they were stamped, final stamped, as of, I think, maybe four months ago. And those have been sent, uh, to Adrian, uh, Richard, uh, Yolanda, Building and Safety, which I actually just sent her today, because, um, we're hopefully going to be pulling permits on the house. Uh, so the fire department is well aware that this was a very difficult site, probably. I've been doing this for twenty-three years, and this is the most difficult site I've seen, so.
Can, can I just interrupt to say, you said four months ago, the latest review sheet we have is from December twenty twenty. Did they give us more documents?
Pardon me, sorry, someone's interrupting me, what did you say?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the, the latest fire department ru- review sheet is from December twenty twenty, you said that they did something four months ago. So maybe we don't have the latest documents, what, what are we missing?
I think they just looked at the plans once again, that just basically, everything stayed the same, the, the swimming pool was removed, uh, and they just restamped the plans.
It looks like it was signed, uh, October twelfth of twenty twenty-one. I don't know why.
Okay, well, we, we don't need to get into that maybe, but, um, good, Jeff, yeah.
Yeah, so Susan, um, what, what the, what the, what the fire department, we talked about the fire department stamping, they stamped a set of plans, right?
Uh, correct.
And the set of plans that they stamped was a set of plans that have been put into us tonight, right?
Which plans are they?
They were in the presentation.
I'm not sure if Susan.
Where should we go?
I, I don't know.
She seems to be having some trouble, she disconnected from audio.
Okay, so, uh, but it's really, it's really a question for Adrian and Richard.
Well, the architect just came up. Commissioner Dennis.
I just, I, I, I just, I'm just trying to cut through a little bit of this concern that somehow the fire department, because we only have the review sheet, didn't really look at these plans. I, I have a hard time figuring out how, uh, how they would get by Richard and Adrian and, uh, Philip in order to come up with the staff report we've got, if, if in fact they didn't see, uh, a wet stamp, fire department approval on, on these plans.
Yeah, we, we had a slide with the approved fire department approvals, maybe we can pull that up. And, and, and by the way, Commissioner Mazza, um, we did provide you with a copy of the grading plans uh, in the email that I was, that I sent you today, but those grading plans are also part of the project plans. Um, in those.
Is that, I got a reference to the grading plans.
In, in those, the, the grade, the grade between the bottom of the, um, driveway to the top of the driveway, uh, the difference is one thirty-nine to one seventy-one. And the total distance between those two points is about a hundred and forty-three feet. So if you do the calculations, it's about thirty-three percent.
Thirty-two. Yeah, that's my problem, it's not twenty-three.
So, I'm sorry, excuse me, twenty, twenty, twenty-three percent, twenty-two, twenty-something percent, something like that. It's very close to the number.
Well, I, I, some of the numbers you use, like a hundred and eighty feet and that distance, the straight distance, if the road was straight, and it's almost straight, is a hundred and eleven feet.
So it's.
Right on the plans.
It's one thirty-nine minus one seventy-one, so it's a thirty-two foot vertical distance divided by a hundred and forty-three. And the percentage is twenty-two point three seven seven six two two.
But I was just told, I was just told that the fire department turnaround is fifty feet out of your hundred and eighty.
Re- removing the turnaround.
Well, then the turnaround is shorter than what the, the plan showed.
All right, guys, guys, these numbers are irrelevant at this point, what is important to me, I think, is, is to Jeff's question about, are we just not trusting the fire department? I just would like to know why, if what we've been told and read is that the code says you get fifteen percent, and in special circumstances, we have the discretion to go to twenty percent. How is it, and this is a question for staff, not the architect or the engineer, but how is it that the fire department can say, well, we're allowed, we're, we're just going to go past twenty percent and give them twenty-two or three? What? It, where's the basis for that in the code, and how can we trust that that actually occurred? Is that something they legitimately do?
What code are you talking about?
The fire code. Can they legitimately, if their discretion is limited to twenty percent, what basis can we trust that saying twenty-two or three is fine?
Why do you think that their, their discretion is limited?
Because that's the, that's what the code says, I've read it in the past, where we live here, we're always concerned about steepness of driveways and whatever, and so it's fifteen percent nominally, special circumstances with discretion gets you to twenty. We ran into this problem on the wine truck, so I, I just don't, if you can tell us how, what legitimate basis gets them beyond twenty, then maybe this makes sense.
It's a fire rebuild, and they're working with the homeowners, that's all there is to it, it's that simple.
Well, then, my question is, why have we never seen one of these before? There's a lot of steep driveways in Malibu.
Not like this one.
So, all right, so, okay, maybe we should move on, we've got this issue about the driveway steepness.
Okay.
Talked about it a lot.
I just want to say something in relation to this, the only reason I'm bringing this up is this pad had to be lowered so far, it even come close, that we've have massive grading, and we have massive retaining walls. We have to give variances in all three, and they all fit together. It's not because one or the other, they all are part of the same thing. That's why this is important, and other things are important, that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, no. Okay, so, let's put that issue aside for the moment, and are there other issues, uh, concerns, questions? Like, we started out with a thought that we just had some technical questions, and we've really gotten pretty deep into that one thing. Um, okay, I don't see anybody else.
I got a hand.
Uh, well, uh, okay, well, let me ask a question, before we get to you, just, um, for, for staff, I would like to know why this is not subject to the hillside ordinance. Um, because it's, it's on a qualifyingly steep slope. I'm finding, not finding my exact note on this now. Um, and it's viewable from the PCH. Um, there we go. And this, this speaks to the, the height of the retaining wall and everything all else, but, um, if it, if it is subject to the hillside ordinance, then theoretically, the whole project can't be more than thirty-five feet total height. And here we have, depending on where you measure from, it's either at least forty feet or maybe fifty-two feet, depending on what you count. So why isn't this subject to the hillside ordinance?
The hillside standards don't apply because, um, they were, you know, they, they designed, uh, based on the requirements that were in place at the time for fire rebuilds, which allow them to, um, construct and maintain their legal non-conformities. Um, and, uh, the other thing is driveways and turnarounds are exempt, uh, you know, the, the construction of driveway and turnarounds are exempt from, uh, the developing on, um, hillside standards.
Then if, if it's, so it's basically being grandfathered in, but then how does that work if this is not on the existing pad? We're extending the pad and putting stuff in at a different elevation? For, for, for that, for that to apply, it has to be the existing pad, right? And this is not that, right?
You can, you can add up to nine, nine hundred square feet to an existing, um, residence. Um, and like I said, the driveway and turnaround are also exempt. Uh, and then we talked about last time about swimming pools, so there's certain exemptions, uh, to hillside standards.
Okay, I will mull that, and John, what was your question?
Well, I was really, uh, this is illegal non-conformity if you're changing the height. It, it had an illegal height in the beginning. So you can't say, well, there's no, they get to maintain legal non-conformities, they didn't have a legal non-conformity on height. They were perfectly conforming.
Correct, um, and, and they're legally conforming now, so, um, you know, the, we.
At height.
You know, yeah, that was, that was explained in the staff report, you know, um, the, the height in this case, um, were, were measured, um, for the garage independent from the house. And, uh, how it was measured in this case, it, it does conform to the height requirement.
Except for the hillside ordinance. It's a legal non-conformity. It wasn't legal, it was legal before it started, so it can't be exempt from the hillside ordinance because it pre-existed.
Hillside standards don't apply, um, because the addition is under nine hundred square feet, and the driveway and turnaround are exempt.
You can have, uh, under the hillside ordinance, you can have a over thirty-five foot house, uh, structure combination, just because one building is separated from the other? I don't think so.
You, you can, yes, uh, each building is measured separately, I think we went over this last time. So, um, each.
Have adjoining walls?
Each building would be measured independently, um, and the bottom of each built, excuse me, each building is measured independently, and so the bottom of each building to the very highest point of each building is measured, uh, and that measurement cannot exceed thirty-five feet.
But my question is, it, it's not a separate building if it has adjoining walls?
That's, that's correct, but, but like I said before, and, 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 sorry Adrian, I just want to make sure that we're, we kind of, we're focusing in on, on what's before us tonight, which is.
And the hillside part is before us.
And I want to make sure that we don't answer any hypotheticals and, and set any, you know, any, say anything tonight that may impact a future decision, what's before you tonight is, as Adrian has said, it's the, the variances for the, for the driveway and, and turnaround.
And, and importantly, the extra height retaining wall, which is occasioned by the extra height here, so that, that, that's what, that's kind of the hook that brings in this discussion. Jeff, you had your hand up, are you?
Well, yeah, I did, but it, it, it seems to be, just, the way I looked at this, at this situation, was, uh, you, you, you're building a PB plus ten on the old pad, but you can't, because in order to get the driveway up there, you're going to exceed the permissible, uh, slopes, who the fire department's going to allow. So in order to, in order to avoid that, you've got to drop down so that you don't have as far to go, which gets the slope, the average slope better. Uh, but then in order to do that, you've got to put up the retaining wall, so as John said, it all hangs together. But the basis of it, of it is the PB plus ten. And it doesn't make any sense to say you can rebuild your PB plus ten, oh, but you can't, you can't access it, you gotta, you gotta provide a driveway somehow in order to have a fire rebuild work. And so far, I've heard discussions about the numbers, but I haven't heard anybody come up with a possible suggestion for how the, the access could work differently without the variances.
Well, let, let, let me ask, John, John, let me ask this question, and this is for Richard or Adrian. What would be the problem with, I'm not saying it will definitely work, but, uh, to have a separate garage that's lower down the hill, uh, that is access to the main house just by an exterior. That is access to the main house just by an exterior stairway or something along those lines, rather than having. One big integrated structure with a four-story stairwell.
So, I mean, the driveway has to be still within a. Relatively close distance to the house and that's in order for the fire department walkway. Or as they call it, the host distance. You know, three hundred feet around the, the house. And so.
Could, could you not put the, the, separate the garage approximately where it is now? So your walk-around distance would be approximately the same. But in a way that by separating the garage and the house, you wouldn't necessarily then have to have this tall retaining wall.
Too narrow. You can't get, you've got the driveway, that's all you got to play with, and you're gonna put the garage, that's all you've got.
You don't need either. You don't need either.
Hey, hey, Jeff, hang on, Jeff, let's hear what Adrian has to say.
I'm not talking.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dennis. Sorry, Jeff.
Yeah, the, the tallest retaining wall are actually on the opposite side of, of the garage. So I'm not sure separating the garage from the house would make any difference. In making those retaining walls any, any shorter.
Yeah.
The, the other thing to keep in mind is that, again, this is not something the homeowner wants to do. It's extremely costly to them.
Yeah.
But, but it's also, it, it, it's not a very fluid design, but they're having to do this because they have no choice. If you separate the garage from the house, there's no way to enter the house. You, you know, there's just no way from the driveway to get into the house. You would essentially have to. Walk up, you know, two flights of steps to get to the same level as the house. So.
Is, is that, is that an illegal thing? Wouldn't, wouldn't that be, I mean, I, I understand if they don't wanna do that, but legally they could do that, right?
It's, it's not, it's not illegal, but it's, you know, they're trying to, trying to make the best out of a really bad situation.
Well, let me ask a question of Adrian then. Do, do not you have to go up two flights of steps to get to the house? They're just internal?
Yeah, well, they have a. Elevator, they have an elevator. And yes, of course. As, as you're taking the groceries into the house, you would do it internally as opposed to walking up the steps. And, and being exposed to the elements.
Okay, well, I, I, I haven't, what I wanna propose. Or ask, and it's partly an answer to what Jeff has. Is. They have to do this because, because. Of all these requirements, we can always give. Variances. On side yard and rear yard setbacks. This house can be the same size. It can be right up against the rear yard property line. And avoid. All this massive things that are going on. We're adding ten percent to the footprint of the old house. And you can easily get that by a side yard and rear yard setback. Easily. It's not a huge amount of square footage. It's, I think Adrian said it was nine, nine hundred. I don't know the exact number. So there's other variances you can give that takes care of. A lot of this stuff. And, and so what we have before us is a proposal for a house that requires a thirty-two foot. Retaining wall, fifty-four hundred cubic yards of grading. Different levels. Moving a septic tank. Grading a bigger path. I mean, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And I, and I'm gonna have a very hard time finding that that's the only way to do it. Because we can, we can grant all kinds of variances. We can do whatever we feel like, but I'm gonna have a hard time with a thirty-two foot. High retaining wall for a single-family house.
Commissioner Maza, I, I'm not sure what the alternative would be to the variances they're requesting.
Side yard setbacks, don't put the, don't push out the front, push out the back.
Push out what the back? Push the development to the.
Move it to the rear yard property line, zero yard setback. Five, five feet for the fire department walk around, or whatever the very minimum is. Okay, this is what I'm saying. This is spending a million dollars on a driveway. On probably a two-million-dollar house. I, I don't know how much the house cost to build, I'm just guessing, okay? But. We're out of proportionality here. That's the problem. We're lowering a pad twenty feet. We're, we're encroaching on the neighbor. We're giving two and a half to one variances. We're, we're building giant retaining walls. And we're moving four hundred and fifty trucks. I can do math and up a steep hill. So this is what I'm, this is my problem and making, we have to make findings that this is. Compatible with the municipal code and it's not even close.
Okay, Mark, you, are you, you had your hand up?
Well, I, I did, but I, I just, you know, I think that it boils down to, you know, is there an alternative? Is this, is this the best alternative? And I, I don't see what. You know, I mean, I, I, I'm sympathetic to the, to the neighbor and, you know, the fact that we've, you know, got a. You know, nobody wants a thirty-foot retaining wall and, you know, a, a, all these variances of the grading and all of that, but. You know, when, at the end of the day, what, you know, you know, we can't redesign the project, but I mean, when you really think about it, I, I don't know what. What good it would do to push the development up the hill any further. You still have to have the hammerhead, which has to be. You know, retained and, you know, it has to be no more than a two percent grade and all. Those, you know, what, how that changes things.
A question for staff on that, you know, to the question about. How is it that the fire department can exceed their, their nominally allowed discretion on the. Slope? What about walk-around distances? Have we seen cases where the fire department has said, oh, yeah, it's supposed to be. You know, X, one hundred and fifty feet and, but in this case, we're gonna allow two hundred feet. Is, is that, do we ever see that? Because maybe the solution is one where instead of having to do big retaining walls and whatever, if we. Push the envelope in a different direction. Say on the walkarounds, maybe, maybe we'd be able to get away with less.
We have, but they're all on the beach because the houses is so far close together, you can't get five feet between two of them. Now, now, I, I objected to that particular project, but they could have done it by moving a wall, but we have done it. We've done a lot of things.
Well, this is a question about what we see from. Staff, do they ever?
I, I, in my experience, I don't see that. We, Richard has a.
Yeah, they, they usually are sticklers on the hundred and fifty feet because that relates to their pump and hose. Setup. And so I think if you went, you know, I think as silly as a hundred and fifty-five feet. I think the problem is that the, the truck that runs out there may not have a hundred and fifty-five feet of hose. And so they are sticklers on that. And to answer the question about. The, the fire department and, and, and slopes, that falls under the, the fire code. I'm sure is a more technical term for it, but it is theirs to interpret and administer. And so that's, you know, that, that's what gives them the discretion. It's not part of our zoning ordinances, the, the angle of these driveways for the purposes of firefighting. And so because of that. As was mentioned here by Commissioner Mazza, he's right. It's the, the walls that get you here. It, it's the grading that gets you here. Those are the things that bring this before us, not necessarily the slope.
Yeah, Jeff?
And Mr. Day had his hand up. He's the architect, is he not?
Do, do we have a specific question for him?
Yes, I have a specific question for him because I was gonna ask him about whether they considered. Possible different. Relocations for the house or pushing the property back up there, although, of course, the house is not before us. But whether there are other design possibilities that could have been utilized. And I don't see him now, so maybe.
He, he is here now. Let's, let's hear from Mr. Day.
Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Welcome. Thank you for carrying our case tonight. Yeah, if you look at the Plan A six, which is the site plan. We're really, we did a lot of different alternative alterations to this thing, but the rear yard setback. Is eighteen foot seven. And we have to remember there's a retaining wall in the back of the property that. You know, the slope continues up beyond that. So. We definitely need the five-foot walk around. We also have some structural engineering issues of having a fifteen-foot area from the slope to slope factor, but. You know, still, even with the eighteen foot seven, we can probably push it back ten feet, possibly maybe twelve. And that's still not enough to really affect the turnaround location of, of, you know, the, the hammerhead. And we could technically push it downhill towards the ocean more to try to achieve that, but once again. The house is trying to basically sit on the footprint of the original house. The ten percent obviously is the, the pushout where the garage is and the transition zones. So. You know, I don't know if the neighbor below us would appreciate the fact that we're coming closer to her. You know, being up on the flat area seems to be the most appropriate place for the house.
Right, thank you.
Well, can I ask you a quick question?
Hang on, John, like, Richard, you wanted to.
Thank you very much, Chair. I believe one other alternative that Susan didn't mention, but one of. When they first approached us on this, we knew this was gonna be challenging. And one of the things that they tried doing was to obtain land from. And Susan would know all the details here, but I believe in this case, Susan attempted to look at other access. That would result in, you know, eliminating the need for this construction of a, of a whole new driveway up from Baylor. And they, they weren't able to secure that. You know, neighbors didn't wanna sell them pieces of their land. And to be chopped up because it would definitely involve grading and retaining walls.
John?
Yeah. Two things. When I was mentioning the rear yard setback, it was for the architect, it was for. For the area for the garage and it's pushing out the front. There's the same amount of square footage available. It's, and I'm not gonna redesign their house. But that's what I was trying to mention. The other question I have is. We've had, we just approved a house on a cliff with no, with no water, basically. So we said, okay, you got. Well, I think it was fifteen thousand gallon tank or something, the one up on. I think it was Decker or Ensign. Is this a situation where they could save a million bucks by putting in a fifteen thousand gallon tank? And be done with? Does anybody ever look at that? Because you don't need to, you, you don't need to drag water up a hill if you've already got it there.
It, the issue here is the fire department wants access to the home. It's not a fire flow issue. You know, and, and it's not only the, you know, for the purposes of a fire, it's also emergency medical. If there's a. Health issue in the home, they wanna be able to drive the ambulance to the, to the front door. They don't wanna have to park it on the street and. Huff it up the hill there with somebody and then, or up the hill to get someone and bring them back down.
Okay.
Uh, this is, this is kind of the tough question, but what kind of precedent is there? For situations where, you know, I guess in a fire burnout. Anybody's come back and said, we wanna restore what we have, but we've run into situations where the code is now so different that. We can't really comply. And does it, does it ever happen? That somebody's told, you know what, sorry, you just can't rebuild on that site because it was. The law was what it was then and it is what it is now, and there's no way to make it work. How often do you see that kind of categorical? Your lot doesn't work anymore argument?
Ask Mr. Gaines.
Yes, I think he would be a better person than I. I've only experienced situations like this where you may not. That, I have seen it where the fire department doesn't let you get portions of your home back because of setbacks or something. They may move you and then, and say, you know, you can't build up onto the property line like you used to. But I haven't seen one where it results in the person losing the ability to, to put something back on their property.
So we're all taking, can we ask Fred about? We, everybody always says, oh, it's a taking if you don't let them build a mansion, but it works in reverse too. It's, it's a taking if you're charging, in my opinion, it's a taking if you're charging a million bucks to put in a hundred-foot driveway.
Dennis?
Make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Okay, okay, why don't we just, we're not even close to being done with this, Dennis, but go ahead and make a motion. I'm gonna debate that motion until we're done.
Do we have a second for the motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we've got a motion on the table. John, you, you've got more.
I've got many more questions.
Okay.
Okay, number one on grading. Normally. As, as I remember, we count. The driveway. All the way to the garage. And the excess for the hammerhead is, is not, is not counted. In this case, we're counting the whole hammerhead. Is there a reason why we change our standards?
I, I mean, that's not a change in our standards. That's part of the, the grading verification certificate. And it's always been that way. So.
I can show you hundreds of them that are.
Well. You know, if we haven't done it that way, then I would say those were done incorrectly because the policy has always been that the turnaround. Is considered exempt rating. And any part of the driveway beyond the initial fifteen feet, that is a requirement of the fire, and is also safety. Grading. And so those fall under the exempt category. The initial fifteen feet and any other. Grading around the development for the, you know, pad. That would be considered non-exempt grading. So in this case, I mean, they're requesting a variant, so. If. The commission wants to add more. To the non-exempt grading category is not a big diff, it's not a big deal because there is a variance being requested here, but this, this is consistent with our policy.
Okay, my second question is, if we have close to four hundred and fifty trucks going up and down a hill and down a private fourteen. Foot road. Why don't we have a traffic plan? Why don't we have a, a restorative? Condition. Normally, you can run four hundred and fifty trucks down a fourteen-foot road. It's a big deal. Here, it's just ignored. Is there a reason for that?
I, I don't think there's a reason for that. We do typically add a condition for restoring the. Driveway, and if that's not a condition that's in the resolution, that's certainly something that we just missed, but we can, we can certainly add that.
They sometimes require a traffic management plan or a construction.
Yeah, that, that is standard. I, I'm sorry to interrupt Commissioner Jennings, but you're absolutely correct. That is a standard condition. That condition, I, I'm.
On that note, on that note, one of, one of the. Members of the public wrote us and asked that we put in a condition that there be. No parking allowed on private Baylor Road because of its narrow width. Is that something that we could be more specific about citing and would that be reasonable to do? That the, the, all the construction vehicles have to be either onsite or substantially further down, down to the public street.
I wanna add to that comment that it's a fire lane.
In, in the past, we have. Deferred from providing specifics about the construction management plan and the construction traffic plan. And left that up to approval of the building manager to be. Be her approval at the time of. Issuance of the building permits. And. It seems to me that, that, that those were the types of things that she would take into consideration, given the fact that it's a private road and it's only. You know, an inch and a half wide.
Okay, John, you have, you have more?
Well, conditions eighteen and nineteen are the construction management plan requirements. So one is. You know, prior to the commencement of work, the applicant shall submit a copy of their construction management plan. And condition nineteen is a construction staging plan. So those two are required prior to. You know, the issuance of any permits.
Well, and also the, that, that same person suggested that the road had some fragility and not just the, the width, but that it maybe couldn't withstand the heavy vehicles. And I know in, in our experience up here in Big Rock, that in that case, we have, the planning commission has. Ordered or conditioned that they post a bond in advance. Is that something that could be done here? To help, you know, reassure the homeowners that if there is damage, that it'll be taken care of in a, in a quick way?
Adrian, are you looking for the restoration condition?
Yeah.
Sorry, Adrian, I just wanna make sure I understand. So your, your questions can be.
Sorry, Adrian, I just want to make sure I understand. So you, your questions, can we require the posting of a bond for damage to private property?
Uh, I, I know, I know we can, we've done it.
Yeah.
Question is whether that's, whether the commission feels that would be necessary or appropriate in this case.
Well, the standard, the standard, uh, resolution says you shall take pictures of the road before, after. And then certify that it's repaired to the original condition. It's, it's a long, we've done it many times.
Is that in there, Adrian, or is it?
It is not, but I'm looking for the condition now, and I will read that into the record to make sure that, that gets that.
Now, Adrian, is, is the rodenticide and the dark skies in this condition? Because these are now current, current in effect rules.
Um, I'll have to check on those. But if there's a good chance it's not, and that's because this was a la- last minute change from. A APR to a CDP.
Yeah, but, uh, well, the APR should have it too. It's a municipal code requirement.
Rodenticide is, it's only a requirement for CDPs.
Uh, condition, condition twenty-five is rodenticides.
Okay.
Sorry, going through these here, yeah, um.
You have the dark skies?
Uh, looking for that one next.
Dark skies may not be applicable because this is not related to the house. So there's no lighting.
All right, you got road light.
There's no lighting being requested as part of this application.
They're not going to light the road at all. So we can put a condition saying you can, may not light the road.
We, we can add those conditions. It's just that the reason they weren't added is because, um, they weren't requesting any lighting as part of this application.
But they, let me ask the, uh, Patrick. These are municipal code laws now that are retroactive, so therefore they would apply to every house in Malibu, correct? Dark skies. It applies to every, every place in Malibu except the high school.
Right, yes, any, any generally applicable municipal code provision apply citywide, yes.
And I don't see dark skies in there, Adrian. Uh, there's about a night lighting of being shielded, but we can definitely add it.
Well, if it's, if it's part of the municipal code, why do we need to add? What is, what is putting it in the conditions give us that doesn't, that, that the municipal code doesn't give us?
It, it just puts the property owner on notice, but you're, you're absolutely correct. I mean, they still have to conform regardless of whether it's a condition or not.
Probably a lot of the conditions are in that same nature that they reflect what is the existing code. They just, we're just telling them.
Yeah, I know. And, and just to take a, a thirty second discretion, if you don't use the exact same language, it raises the question of whether they meant something different. Than what was men- mentioned in the code. So it's a probably a bad thing to do.
Okay, I'd like to go back real quickly to parking on the street. Uh, this is a fire lane. It's the only way in and out of these properties, and it's fourteen feet wide. So you park one truck on it. Can't get a fire truck in there anyway. So. Why wouldn't we want to put a condition that they, they can't park their equipment on the, on a fourteen foot wide private road?
Nobody said we didn't. What we said was that these are conditions that are imposed by the building manager. Because you have to provide a construction staging plan and a construction management plan prior to pulling your permits. And the, the building official decide whether, you, you know, otherwise you could say, okay, you can't, you know. Cement trucks can't, can't wash out on the driveway. You can't do this, you can't do that. You end up spending. Even more time dealing with things that are already covered by the process.
Yeah, I think we've called out that we've, we've alerted anybody who's, uh, looking at the record here that, that, that that's a potential issue. So maybe that's sufficient. Um, other issues, I, I, I'm just going to say. I have deep problem with the way that the occasion's the huge retaining wall, just in terms of the precedent. And I don't feel confident that there aren't any potential solutions onsite that might work better. I mean, we, we haven't identified them tonight. But, uh, I, I'm not comfortable with the notion that we're just giving away this, not giving away. That we're saying, yeah, this retaining wall, you need it here, so you get it. To me, that's, that, that is a step down the slippery slope.
And, uh.
What percentage grade is that slippery slope?
Uh, twenty-two and a half.
Well.
If you, if you, if you went to, uh, high school in Tijuana.
All right, John, you have more, or we have a motion on the table?
Well, uh, uh, okay, uh. I'm wondering, and this is a question of, we never got the question a- answered. And I'd like to ask Fred Gaines about takings. Is this? If we deny this, is this a taking?
Oh, my God.
Well, we get the other, you guys bring it up all the time. If we don't let them have a mansion, it's a taking. So I want to ask the question in reverse. Can the fire department keep you from having a house?
And, and, and Chair, of course, you know, your discretion, you can, you can ask. And then it's, you know, i- it's whether or not there's any economically viable use of the land. That's kind of the, 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 the standard. So whether or not this specific variances are, are, are granted or denied tonight. I don't think that in, in of itself would unequivocally constitute a takings. There would need to be a much more fleshed out process and back and forth. What's before you tonight is what the applicant has submitted. I understand in interaction with the fire department, and I understand all the challenges and, and issues with this. But that's, you know, I, I, I'm, you know, Commissioner Maza, I, I don't mean to, to, to kind of, you know, be an obstacle here. But, but this, this type of hypotheticals and yes or no, it is a takings, is not a takings, is really a holistic fact dependent scenario. Based on the entirety of the, of the property, not just a, a single application for, for variances here tonight. But of course.
I'll accept that answer every time the word taking comes up in the future. That's great.
Same answer you've been given. Um, so, uh. I'd, I'd like to suggest that, that, uh, that the motion, uh, that the maneuver of the motion might want to amend it. To provide for the, uh. For the addition of the, uh, restoration, uh, provisions that we typically have in, in the situations we've been talking about earlier.
On the road?
Yes.
On the road?
Yeah.
Um, I'm not, I'm not going to do that. And first and then second of all, the, the numbers the Commission of Maza throwing out on the trucks is incorrect. We're talking about export, not the whole grading job, and the export of two thousand yards, that's about a hundred and fifty-two trucks. It's not four or five hundred trucks, and that's that, thirteen yard trucks. They'll back that truck down, they'll fill it up, and they'll leave. I'm not going to put any more money into these, to these fire victims that are going to have to spend the money they're going to spend to make this driveway what it is. And then tell them that they have to fix the road too. I don't believe they should have to do that.
And Jeff, if he's not going to accept it, I'll, I'll second your motion.
I didn't make a motion.
Yeah, this is Dennis's motion, so.
Okay, then Jeff doesn't have to accept it. He seconded it.
No, no, I suggested it. I'm the second of the motion.
And do you still second the motion notwithstanding? Okay, so.
We're not even going to have them fix the road if they destroy it? That's unprecedented.
We could, we could have the vote and we could, uh, vote no just in response to this one condition. And have somebody else propose a motion to, that includes it.
There, there's also two how, two other houses up the hill that burned down as well, and they're going to rebuild. So why would you stick all that money with these people?
Because they are responsible for returning the road to its original condition today. If the other people want to destroy it later, they will be responsible for it. This is a condition we have put in on almost every private road. Because the, the city does not pay for that road, the homeowners do. And you drive, in your math, a hundred and fifty trucks on it. Uh, and, and realize that's just the dump trucks, not the road graders and all that kind of stuff. And this is a, the only access to a neighborhood, and it's only fourteen feet wide. And, and we're going to destroy their road and say, ah, don't worry about it. No problem.
Yeah, Dennis, it seems like they, the evidence should be able to apportion any, like, the causality of any damage should be clear that it was these guys or, or not. I mean, unless the both projects or, or three projects are all happening all at the same time, uh, which hopefully won't ever happen. That's, that's actually kind of another concern. If there are several houses up the hill that are going to do work, how do you take care of the road in that situation?
Well, we've done it a million times.
Is that just a problem for the building official to sort out the construction schedule? Or, or do we put in a condition that says no more than two houses get rebuilt at this, or, you know, I don't know.
Can't do that.
Uh, no.
No, but our condition covers that. It covers the, the road before and after. And when you do approve another house, you do the same thing. Okay?
Do you have specific language, Adrian?
Yeah, and you know, we're, we're not talking about a very, uh, you know, long segment of, of the road. I think we're talking about maybe two, three hundred feet. Um, and I, I, I do have the condition. Um, now, uh, the point being made that there could be other construction happening, and that may be true. Uh, this condition is something that we add to discretionary requests. It's not a condition that we add to the ministerial projects. Or the fire rebuild. So there could be multiple projects, uh, under construction right now, uh, that don't have this condition. Uh, but the condition requires that they do a, you know, a pre-construction survey and a post-construction survey. And that they do repairs of any damage that takes place in between that. And so again, in mind, that, that damage may not all be resulting from this project, although. You know, there is a lot of grading here and a lot of, uh, exports. So, uh, you know, if there is going to be, you know, damage, I think the majority may result from this project. But here's the condition. Prior to the issuance of any development permit. The applicant slash property owner shall provide a pre-construction assessment of the existing condition of Baylor Road to the subject parcel. Any copy of this assessment should be kept on file with the city. The applicant, property owner shall be responsible for repairs of any damage to the road. That may result during the construction phase of the proposed project. Any, any obvious damage to the road that becomes apparent during, during the construction phase, including but not limited to potholes, cracks and rips. Shall be immediately repaired by the applicant, uh, slash property owner. Prior to a planning department final inspection, the applicant. Uh, property owner shall submit a post-construction assessment of the road to demonstrate compliance with this condition. A photo survey shall be utilized to complete this assessment.
So it's basically taking photographs, right?
Yes, that's the way we found this to be the most, uh, easiest way to document this.
Yes, Dennis?
Oh, let's, I, I'd like to ask Mr. Ellis. Can we unmute Mr. Ellis, please?
Go ahead and ask, ask your question.
So, Mr. Ellis, do you understand what's in front of you right now on, on possible road repair?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
Yes, can you hear me?
Like that's, that sounds like something that's, um, I, I don't necessarily agree with it, but I guess we've got, we've got some kind. Have a, you know, Adrian just read it, so you may have to fix something on the road when you're done.
Yeah, I, I would say, you know, the road is already in disrepair, so there, there would have to be a, a, a very serious assessment of it, yeah.
I, if it's in poor repair now, we're not asking you to repair anything other than what might be caused by your construction activities. If it's a bad repair now, you got to restore it to its poor condition.
Um, in, in cases where the road has been in poor, um, state. Um, you know, there, there might be another option, which is, um, the property owner can negotiate with the HOA. I mean, somebody is, you know, repairing the road, and they may want to take a, a, you know, some sort of stifen, uh, amount. Uh, that will be used at a later time to rebuild the entire driveway. So that might be something they can negotiate in lieu of this condition, so we can add additional language, um, to that effect.
I think what you're saying is that you would put this condition in, but that they would then negotiate and say, look, we damaged it fifty percent. We'll pay for that portion and, and you, the rest of the neighborhood will pay for the rest of it to.
We, we can add to this condition that says alternatively, the property owner can agree, uh, can, uh, reach an agreement with the. You know, the HOA or the entity, uh, that, uh, maintains the road. And, um, uh, uh, the agreement can be reached to provide a donation for future repairs. Instead of, you know, complying with the condition.
That almost sounds like micromanaging somewhere, like.
Well, no, it gives them, it gives them leeway to, to negotiate out of it if the, if the homeowners association, if they have one.
Yeah.
Agrees, then, then it's no harm, no foul.
There should be a road maintenance agreement at a minimum.
Well, I know areas that don't have them.
Well, I'm sure there are, but.
Yeah, if there's no road association, then you fall back on what essentially amounts to common law, and you've got a responsibility to maintain it anyway.
Yeah.
Well, it sounds like, it sounds like we have a deal in writing. I guess, obviously, Mr. Ellis. What will happen is they'll be able to stick a lot of pictures, and I know that road's in bad shape, and it's, it's not fair that you get hung up, get hung with the whole thing. But I guess, you know, we've got, that would be an option. I think it's probably something you're going to have to work, work into. Because, um, just to move forward with this, to be honest. And I will change my, I'll take Commissioner Jennings' friendly amendment, and I'll add that to mine.
Okay, so we have.
You got the language, uh, or Patrick, I'm sorry.
Patrick, yeah.
Yeah, so, uh, once again, it's just my understanding, it's, it's the language that, that Adrian read in. And then basically within, you know, alternative that the property owner, you know, can reach an agreement with the entity that maintains the road. For a, for a payment in lieu, um, of the, of the repair work required by this condition.
Yeah.
Okay, and were there any other special conditions added to this that Patrick needs to read out at this point? I forget now.
I haven't added any.
Okay.
The restoration is the only one.
All right, so it sounds like we've got a motion on the table. Without further ado, I think we're about ready for a vote, right? Um, can we call the roll, please, Rebecca?
Yes, Vice Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Maza?
Uh, I can't make the findings that this is appropriate for a thirty-two foot wall, and I don't know.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
I agree with John, no.
Motion carries.
All right, with that, uh, it's eight fifty-four. We've only got a little bit left, but I think probably we want to take a quick break, right? Is, is anybody here wanting to try to power through everything? No, let's take a quick break.
I need five minutes.
Yeah, all right, let's, uh, it's eight fifty, can we be back by nine? Will that work?
Work's ready.
All right. Turn off your videos and mute yourself. There he is. All right, we're all back. Hi, Renika.
Hello.
We are now on to. Item. Four B. Sixty-three thirty-three C-Star Drive. This is coastal development permit number sixteen dash zero two eight. An application for a new single-family residence and associated development. Continued from July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Maybe we have a staff report, please.
Yes, of course. Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the planning commission. My name is Renika Brooks, and I am the planner. On this project, which is the proposal for the construction of a new single-family residence on vacant property. Located at sixty-three thirty-three C-Star Drive. This item was originally scheduled for the April fourth, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting. And after the report was published, staff received correspondence from neighbors immediately east. And up slope of the project site. Located at sixty-three twenty-five C-Star Drive. And those neighbors expressed concerns about potential view and privacy impacts. From the proposed from the previously proposed rooftop deck. In response, staff conducted a primary view determination and confirmed that the roof deck. Which was originally proposed at eighteen feet in height. That it did not obstruct blue water views. Staff also received a letter from the president of the C-Star Estates Homeowners Association. Who indicated that the roof deck had not been conceptually approved by the HOA. Because the roof deck was inconsistent with the local provisions to protect privacy and scenically impressive views of the ocean. Although the city does not have provisions to protect privacy. And the project as previously proposed did comply with the development standards of the local coastal program and the Malibu Municipal Code. The applicant requested the item be continued to the May second planning commission meeting. And this was to allow time to address the neighbors' concerns, including those of the HOA. At May at the May second meeting, the item was continued again to a date uncertain. To allow additional time for the applicant to address the neighborhood concerns. After an attempt to reduce the size of the roof deck, the applicant. Applicant decided to eliminate it in its entirety to build a consensus with the concerns of the neighborhood. The final design without the roof deck is what is before the commission tonight. Which was originally scheduled for your consideration a couple of weeks ago and was continued to tonight's meeting. Because the last commission meeting had several items and the meeting ran pretty late. Next slide, please. Depicted here is the vicinity map showing the general location of the project site. Which is zone rural residential with the minimum lot size of two acres. The project site is a little over acre in size. Next slide, please. And here is a closer view of the project site, which is located in the C-Star Estates neighborhood. Which is a residential gated community at the end of Morningview Drive. Next slide, please. And listed here is the scope of work for the subject application, which includes the construction of a one-story single-family residence and detached garage. The total development square footage, including the eve projections beyond six feet. Is a little over seventy, excuse me, sixty-seven hundred square feet. The project also includes a new swimming pool and spa. The installation of a septic system, outside wastewater treatment system, excuse me. Of landscaping, hardscape, grading and associated development. And as a reminder, this application does not include any discretionary requests. Next slide, please. Depicted here is the site plan, which shows the proximity of the proposed development to the immediately adjacent residences. Next slide, please. And depicted here are a couple of elevations, the top of which is. Viewed from the east, which is from the vantage point of the neighbors who had concerns about privacy. The bottom elevation is taken from the north looking south towards the ocean. And again, it shows the removal of the rooftop deck. Next slide, please. So there has been a host of correspondence received on this application. Which originally consisted of a lot of opposition to the previously proposed roof deck. Once the project was revised to eliminate the deck. Staff receive several letters of support, including one from the local HOA. And in conclusion, staff has found this project to be consistent with the LCP and the Malibu Municipal Code. Staff is able to make all applicable findings for this project and recommends adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-two. That does conclude my presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Shoot it again. Thank you, Renika. I try not to shuffle papers and breathe and make noise, so I end up anyway. Ex parte disclosures, Dennis.
I spoke with Ms. Belane. Two couple of meetings ago about when this was going to start, but learned nothing.
Jeff?
None.
Mark?
None.
John?
I visited the site with Craig Hill. Two meetings ago, maybe three. Out of this issue, learned nothing. Talked to the neighbor. I just. He showed me the view problem he had. It's all been disclosed in the past. Other than that, nothing.
Yeah, we we met with the the neighbors, we called the Vinces, and talked about saw their view of where the rooftop deck would be and so forth. I guess one thing I learned is that they, just for the record, they they would have blocked. A little bit of blue water view and also would have blocked some visually impressive scenery, including mountains, canyons, et cetera, as the LLP discusses. So it's a good thing that that deck is not happening now, and. Kudos to the people, the neighbors for working it out and working together on this. All right. So first thing we have the. The applicant applicant team. It's Susan again, and so.
Um, can I also ask their intention is to leave this open for question and answers? And just be available to you, and I have the list of those who are available. Could I ask if any members of the public currently in the meeting and would like to speak on this issue that they use the raise hand button at the bottom of their screen to indicate so now?
Yeah, thank you.
At this time, we don't currently have anybody that had pre-signed up to speak on the issue.
Okay, so you hear that, Susan? Do you guys want to make any presentation now, or do you just want to be available for questions? Your call. Susan, please.
Jonathan Day, the architect on this one, too.
So the team is Susan Belane from View Ventures Planning and Permits, Jonathan Day, Caushia Day Architects, Fred Gaines, attorney. Tricia Coffey from Ashert Civil Engineering, and then the ownership changes, Troy and Tina. Isak are the owners.
Yeah, Susan has her hand up. Let's let's.
Oh, I was just responding to you, Craig. We're not going to make a presentation this evening. We're just available for answers for any questions.
Great, thank you. All right, so. No public other comments, so we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the virtual commission table. I see John's got a hand up. He's quick there.
Very quick question of. Renika, is there a landscaping plan in this project?
Yes, it is included in the project plans. That were attached to your staff report.
Okay.
And I actually, let me see if I could direct you to the PDF.
Oh, no, I I looked at it. I didn't know if it was official plan or not. Okay, well. Unless anybody else has a comment, I'm going to make a motion to approve the project. With the following conditions. One that. The dark sky ordinance be added as item as condition fourteen G. On, I'd like to add an item fourteen H. No, no part of the roof shall be lighted at any time. Reason for that is it's really, really, really close to the next door neighbor. And then. A new condition. That no occupancy, the roof shall be allowed. Any changes in this provision shall require a CDP. Or ACDP or CDP amendment granted by the planning commission. And that's my motion.
Do we have a second for that motion? We don't we don't see a second yet. Does anybody want to comment on why they wouldn't?
I am, by the way.
The motion fails if it doesn't get a second.
I want to make a state that I'm open to. Suggestions on additional or lesser.
Amendments. Yes, I know. My question is, yes, the motion fails, but the question is of what he has proposed, what might be objectionable to somebody and why?
I'll I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, well, I would like to comment on that.
Yeah.
The reason I put this in there is. Number one. We always have the dark sky provision in. Contrary to. Burnout, as they stated. That's a standard provision. Number two. There is never a need to light a roof that's flat. Because you can't see it. Except. Going light going up. And. So. The reason I put that in there is it is exactly the same level as the pool deck of the house next door, and it's thirteen feet away. And the reason I put in the third provision is. There's been so much, this project has taken so much time. On the use of the roof deck. I want to make sure in the future that. If some. Counterperson. At the city or something says, oh, go ahead. Have a party up there. It comes to a reasonable authority, and if.
I'm sorry.
Well, I have a condition. I have a situation where somebody graded of a river on Point Doom, and. Nobody will nobody will do anything about it. But. Yes, those mistakes happen. And.
It was the reasonable authority that got me.
Well, we're reasonable, aren't we? That's that's why I don't. This this whole thing has been over use of a party deck on a roof. And I think if that gets changed, it should come back to us. That's why I put that in there.
Right.
Because the homeowners association objected to it, both neighbors and Malibu West. Okay, so.
Is this going to be a standard condition for every project going forward, John?
No, this is there because. There's absolutely. We, the whole project is dependent upon. I don't think this would pass tonight if we said. You can have parties on your roof deck. Okay? That's why I put in, we're voting to say. We're approving this without a roof deck. And. There's no reason to light a roof. That you can't see. You don't, you maybe have a mancered roof or something, but this is flat. And.
You're worried that somebody's going to get up there and there'll be lights and there'll be people dancing and things.
Well, I think his I think his concern is that this design is quote unquote roof deck ready. And that, you know, some, like you said, somebody might just come back six months from now and.
Yeah, ask for a stairway up to the roof or something, and some.
Are are all are all flat roof projects roof deck ready?
No.
Not not my house, but.
No, they are.
So, all right, first of all, to your first suggestion. We sometimes put in dark sky ordinances in as conditions before dark sky ordinances took effect. But aren't they in effect now?
Well, that's a question. It's been four years, and they don't seem to be. But yes, they are.
Okay, so then we we don't need to put. That condition in because it's already in the law.
If if it's now our policy. Never to put dark sky conditions in, then that's fine with me.
No, it's my 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 policy is is we don't put provisions in that are already that that just simply duplicate aspects of our ordinances that are already. aspects of our ordinances that are already.
Okay, that's, I I would be willing to drop that. I just want to assure Malibu West and the neighbors that this roof is not going to be lighted. And that's part of dark sky, but this is a particularly agree, you know, the way we do compliance in Malibu, this is a particularly problem on this particular building.
I don't understand that. The way we do compliance in Malibu is if neighbors object and then code enforcement goes out.
Well, you have a very.
Richard, can you just clarify, this is subject to dark sky rules now, right?
You're muted.
Sorry. Yes, that is correct. And actually, I was trying to find the code section about the deck, so I apologize, but yes, it is subject to it. I want to say that October of this year is the residential compliance.
For everybody, not just new projects, everybody, right?
Correct. I agree with the dark skies, but dark skies allows you to have parties on your roof. Okay, all you have to do is have a timer, a motion sets it.
These folks aren't going to do that. They're not going to do that.
They're not going to do that. That's why I'm putting the provision in. They're not going to do that.
See, this is the, the, we've had this discussion a million times. It's about, you know, well, all they have to do is, you know, slice out this little part here and then they can turn that into an illegal list out of the other thing.
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about, I'm not talking about illegal. This is legal to have a lit roof. Okay? It's legal. I want to make it specific that it isn't.
Okay, where are we proceeding with? Somebody?
We, we have, you have, you made your motion in your second and that's on the table and we're having discussion.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
And then Jeff, you have an objection to some future non, non planning commission person being able to say, go ahead and have a roof deck, party, house.
Yeah, but the, the problem with it, John, is it, it goes too far. I mean, you could say that about everything. We can't let anybody do anything unless the, unless the planning commission gets to say, this is not, our rules don't work that way.
Yes, they do. There, we got them in hundreds of houses in Malibu. Hundreds of provisions saying you shall come back to the planning commission if you want to change this.
Okay.
John, it, it, Jeff isn't going to accept this.
Okay, well, can I ask Richard a question?
Yeah.
Richard, could somebody come into your department and say, I want a stairway up to my roof and get an AAPR from somebody who's hanging out without you signing it or your, your predecessor or next person in line?
You say I'm going somewhere?
Why, your predecessor, you're, you can say that.
Yeah, I know, I, I.
Which has been said recently.
Yes, no, no. If the roof deck were under, to get to Commissioner Mazza's point, if the, if the railing, the total height of all construction is under eighteen feet, the answer is yes, there's nothing that would prohibit somebody from applying for such a thing. If the railing went over twenty, eighteen feet, then we'd have to process a site plan review. But yes, to, to Commissioner Mazza's point, if the, if the commission's concerned tonight is to preclude a roof deck, I know they are a sensitive topic, the best method would be to to, to condition the project, but I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Mazza.
Thank you.
And Jeff, what do you think about that answer? Do you, you still don't think it needs any kind of condition on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I have a question for discussion. I would like to understand why the, given that the original subdivision permit, CDP five dash ninety dash three two seven from nineteen ninety presumably required that this is for the whole Sea Star Estates that the that it conformed to natural topography, I'm quoting here, conformed to natural topography and minimize grading to the amount necessary for driveway access. There's, here we have thirty-two hundred plus cubic yards of grading, of which twenty-two hundred plus is, is export. And the site was already graded when, when Sea Star was done, so there's already a lot of grading that existing there. I don't understand why we would be approving this much extra grading under the original permit for the, the development. That's a question for staff.
Renika, do you wish?
Yeah, I was looking up, there is, there is some discussion about that in your staff reports. I was just pulling that up to make sure I was clear before answering your question. But what I believe is my understanding that the coastal commission has approved other types of grading if it's an extension of the building pad. And the planning department's recommendation is consistent with past action by the coastal commission.
And why would, I mean, the lot is relatively flat already because it was pre-graded. Why would we be needing to do all this additional grading? I mean, is this, is, is there a purpose? Was it to change the overall height so that it wasn't in somebody's, the, the view of the people above or so that it wasn't in the face of the people below or why, why are we doing several hundred truckloads of, of export here?
Okay, let me pull up the grading plan to refresh my memory. In the interim, maybe Susan or someone from her team can answer that question while I pull up the grading plan.
Yeah, I mean, I sort of suspect that it may be an artifact of, of related to the rooftop deck and that was the design of the house they, they did to accommodate that somehow in terms of the overall elevation and now that's not here, so maybe.
The civil engineer has her hand up.
Uh, yeah, Tricia, what, what, what enlightenment, please?
Sure. So if you look, a majority of the grading is under structure here, so we're not asking for a variance or anything like that and outside of the building, there's actually somewhat minor amount of grading, so majority of this is because we're tucking it back into the hillside there and so a majority of this grading you will see is under structure.
Okay, thank you. And then back for staff though, but that original permit wants it grading to be minimized to the amount necessary for driveway access. John?
Oh, another question, different question.
Okay, Steph?
I think perhaps once again, maybe their engineer can describe this in a bit more detail. But when you look at the sections of the home, a lot of which you see there is a it appears that they are having to create a, a flat area for the home. I, I don't believe that you actually have a, a flat building pad on the property. If the, it, it, an area was, how can I explain that has a you know, essentially like a ten to one or something like that?
Yeah, no, I'm looking at sections and it, yeah, it's not flat, flat, but it's pretty close and it just seems like a lot of grading for a, 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 a house on the, on that should just be on the ground.
But it's exempt grading.
But, but it's contrary to the subdivision permit is my question, or, or that's my question, isn't it contrary because that's supposed to be limited to grading to the amount necessary for driveway access. Driveway access is easy here.
Well, staff interpreted that subdivision grading limitation to mean that grading associated with additional building paths beyond that for the primary residence. I believe there's language in that coastal commission issued CDP that talks about accessory development, like separate buildings, pools, et cetera, that were on a building pad that was separate from that of the primary residence.
Right, and, and now I'm recalling, we had a question about that on a birch house in the same neighborhood years ago.
And so there, and I think to get to your point, Chair Hill, it's what we've done in the past as a, as a staff is we've we've critiqued these projects to make sure they don't create bigger yards. And it's, the grading is limited to what's under the home. I recall, I don't know if Renika worked on it, but we had another Sea Star home where one of the concerns we had and we brought up before the planning commission was how the pad was being expanded for the purposes of a pool and a deck. And you guys, we scaled that back, yes. And in this case, the majority of this grading is under the home, keeping it low to the topography.
Okay, I, 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 I I don't, I don't hear a reason not to vote for it here. I just, it just seemed like I, 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 I don't understand completely, but maybe I don't need to. John?
Good question.
Question of staff, oh, actually, this is probably a question of Jeff. I'd like to make a motion that that the, or add an addition to his motion that heaven help us, we, we ban, we ban all plants. I, I can't find the landscaping plan, but they're all over the place. There's palm trees that we ban all plants. They're banned by the city of Malibu for fire reasons. This, this, there's seven, six palm trees within ten feet of the house next door.
Yeah, and the slideshow that Renika showed had on the elevation views showed a palm tree or two even, so.
Yeah, so that's something I I can't understand why we wouldn't want to do that, but I haven't help us. If we don't, I'd like to make that provision.
Is there a landscape plan?
There is. It's, let me pull it up again.
There is, and it's very tiny and hard to read. But the, the palm trees are included on a lot of the elevation drawings and I, I don't know if that means if they're in the drawings, they're part of the plan or not.
I don't believe so, but I'm, let me pull up the landscape.
I mean, they're banned, aren't they?
They are.
They are, they are.
Not if we approve them.
Exactly, so I mean.
The biologist won't let that fly.
If we approve a landscaping plan, it's approved.
Okay, hang on, Susan, let's hear from Susan. She'll, she'll have a comment here.
Hi, Craig. I just wanted to let you know that this did come up, this question with one of the neighbors when we were working with all the neighbors in the neighborhood to make sure everyone was happy with the new design and removing the roof deck. One neighbor, the neighbor below, Mr. Hammer Schmidt, did have a question and he asked about the landscape plan and did ask what looked to appear to be palm trees. And I, our landscape architect, Julie Friedrichsen, responded to that question and I will read you her email and it says, are you referring to the Drakenia Draco trees? These are not palm trees, but a tall succulent tree. They are allowed in the city of Malibu since they are not a palm tree and not flammable like a palm.
Okay, I.
But my, my question would be, are they on the landscape plan and I can't?
Yes, they are. They are. Commissioner Mazza, it's page, PDF page eighty-four of your planning commission packet. I think one of the great things about digital packets is that you can blow it up to kind of see closer, you know, what this plant species is.
While I'm watching you, can you tell me what page it is in our staff report? Because I cannot, I don't have two computers.
It's a part of the attachment that includes the architectural plans.
Okay, and you know what plan it is?
FM three, FM dash three.
It's not an L, it's an F, huh?
FM three.
Yeah.
Yes, and I did look up the dragon tree while Susan was talking and it, it is a succulent. I know it does kind of look similar to a palm tree in a two dimensional plans, but it, it's a different type of tree.
The, the landscape plan, when you look at the tree legend, they really only have two trees, Dragon Tree and Toian. Then the rest are shrubs and then two species of ground cover. I do not see a palm tree on there.
No, there's none.
Okay, so, so what we're hearing then is that on this plan, I'll change my glasses here. Uh, this is just a designer artifact. You, you showed us this slide. I don't know if you can even see it on the screen, but there's a palm tree right there. That's pretty clearly a palm tree. Jonathan, you, you will have a comment. This was just some color for the design, not part of the actual plan.
That is correct. There's no way to identify a dracus monumudus type of plant on a CAD file, so it's just a placeholder.
Right, there's no clip art for it.
Secondly, regarding the rooftop real quick, we raised the, our roof to the eighteen foot height, so there's no availability for us to ever put a roof deck up there.
All right, well, thank you. We're, we're. Okay, so what else? What else? What other issues do we have on this? Anybody? No? And so nothing that John offered, you want to include, Jeff? Is that right or was there?
No, and I'll, I'll add that this is a clean sheet project and clean sheet projects ought to go forward without us adding our little curlicues and personal desires.
Yeah, well. Okay, sounds like we're ready for a vote then. Can we call the roll, please, Rebecca?
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Mazza?
Yes.
Commissioner Whitten?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, so that one passed and now we're on to I believe this is our last item of the night, item five A, new public hearings. This is at forty-eight seventeen Latigo Canyon Road. Coastal Development Permit Amendment number twenty-two dash zero zero two, an application to amend coastal development permit number sixteen dash zero zero five, variance number sixteen dash zero zero two, site plan review number sixteen dash zero zero six, and minor modification number sixteen dash zero zero seven to revise the condition of approval regarding undergrounding utilities. And who's got the staff report for this?
So you have one of our newer planners, Chair Hill and members of the planning commissioner, I'd like to introduce Coley Turner to you.
Welcome. Welcome. Hi.
Good evening, Chair Hill and members of the planning commission. My name's Coley Turner. I'm planning technician for the planning department. The item we have before you tonight are for the amendment to previously approved coastal development permit amendment for the project at four eight one seven Latigo Canyon Road. Next slide, please. The subject property is located in the rural residential two acre zoning district and not located in the appealable zone of the coastal, the California Coastal Commission. Next slide. On August sixth, two thousand and eighteen, the planning commission approved CDP number one six dash zero zero five to allow new two-story single-family residence with a basement and two, two-car garage. On April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two, the CDP amendment was submitted. Next slide, please. Under the approved condition number eighty-five, it required that power lines shall be undergrounded prior to the issuance of a grading permit. However, the applicant cannot underground utilities without coordinating with foundation construction. Because the foundation would require the grading permits to be issued, this condition cannot be met. Staff has not found any issue with the following undergrounding utilities concurrently with the grading activities. Therefore, staff recommends the following change to condition number eighty-five. Power lines are located within close proximity to the proposed residence. These power lines are required to be undergrounded as a part of the project and must be shown on the plan. The applicant or property owner shall place notes on the development plans for the undergrounding of the power lines. Power lines shall be undergrounded prior to final planning inspection. Next slide, please. There are no changes to CDP one six dash zero zero five within the application. Therefore, staff recommends approval of resolution number twenty-two dash five one. This concludes my presentation. Staff and the applicant are available for any questions or comments. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much, Coley. Good job. We have now the applicant team. I see a couple of people listed there. Do we have other out?
Would you like to do disclosures first?
Well, since you mentioned it, okay. Disclosures, John?
I visited when we approved. I've learned nothing since.
Jeff?
None.
Mark?
None.
Dennis?
None.
I will disclose that I watched the twenty eighteen video, the, the video of the twenty eighteen hearing, which I think we're all obligated to do, I think, to be able to hear it tonight. And Lily was the planner then. I, I, I guess my, my question I, I have a question here about Edison and the easements and maybe I'll just say it's, it's sort of involved, so I should. Well, no, let me ask it now. In the hearing, it was found. In the hearing, uh, it was found and the architect mentioned that, um. Edison has an easement here that they didn't use, that they weren't supposed to be coming across the property. And it wasn't clear whether the easement was down the side of the property or across the front along the road. But that they were gonna, they expected that Edison would be using their easement. So, uh. The written resolution that came out of that meeting doesn't accurately reflect what the commission discussed at the time. About that they needed to wait and see what Edison was going to do. So I don't, it seems like there's. Question may not be ripe to decide yet unless and until we understand. Why isn't Edison using their easement and? I'm not, I'm not articulating this well. Um. It, it, it does, does the undergrounding even need to occur on the property, I guess, is the question? So that, that's a question maybe we can talk about. It's on the table now. Um, let's hear from the applicant.
I have a, I have a question.
This is. Is related to disclosures?
No, it's.
Okay, well, let's, let's hear from the applicant.
I, I think we may not be able to hear from the applicant.
Okay, okay, why?
Okay, because this was approved on August sixth, two thousand and eighteen. It expired on August sixth, two thousand and twenty-one. Okay, this, this, uh, under normal circumstances, we give three years. So we cannot hear an expired CDP. It's a hard and fast rule of the coastal commission. You don't get one day over. And I don't see anything in the record that says they ever got an extension. So that's, 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 it's, it's hard and fast rule, so, uh, unless there was an extension granted, we can't hear this.
So Coley, with due respect, I think this is a question for Richard.
Sir, Pat, perhaps you can remind, I, my mind, I'll, I'll say is blank on the number of the state bill here. Um, but during COVID, there was a eight, uh, eighteen, it was a eighteen month extension?
Yeah, that was, that was correct.
Okay, uh, shouldn't that be in the record?
We can add that if the commission would like, it would not be an issue, but because this is a new home. Uh, there was a state bill that was passed that automatically extended, uh, permits and it also. There were some other things it did, but this particular project would fall under that state bill.
So how would we add that to the record?
We can amend a recital. Adrian, do you see an issue with that?
Yeah, I think that's the best way to approach this. Um, and, and that's. That's a good catch. Um, the new expiration date on this is, uh, February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
That, that would be good to include in the record, just be.
And, and our action tonight would not add three years, correct?
It, it's the, Coley, could you tell us if the request includes an extension?
Uh, to my knowledge, no, but I'll let me.
I don't recall seeing an extension request.
And so they would have to come back to the commission and, uh, for an extension. Okay, hopefully there's any more bill changes coming our way.
Okay, as long as we add that, that, uh, language, I have no problems at all with this.
Okay, and in that case, we, we still have to hear from the applicant or they have the option to make a presentation if they'd like. Um, and Rebecca, let me just, do we have any participants signed up, uh, to talk about this other than the applicant?
We don't currently. If there is anyone present in the meeting who wishes to provide public comment, please click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And then present for the applicant team, we have Yo Hakamori and the owners Nina and Andreas Gruder.
Okay, so that's up to them to decide who they would like. I see Yo has his, uh, hand up, so. Hear from him then, please.
Hi, everybody. Um, I'm really sorry, uh, the, uh, owners had to leave, uh, Nina and Andreas, uh, they left about thirty minutes ago. Um, so I apologize for that and thank you very much for having me again. Um. I was, as you guys mentioned, uh, here in front of you, um. About, wow, four years ago and where we received this, um, uh, planning commission resolution eighteen fifty. And just to touch upon our, our, uh, extension of the CDP. We did receive, uh, CDP extension. I could recall applying for that and getting that, so. Not a hundred percent sure why it's not in the record, but I would like to ask that maybe, um, the planner in charge would. Maybe look at the records and see if they can locate, um, our permit, uh, extension, uh, application and approval. So I do believe we did that. Um, it was about, uh, in late July, early August of, um. Twenty twenty and Lily, I think, was still working, uh, at the planning commission. I'm sorry, at the, um. Um, planning department and she, she kind of spearheaded that for us, I believe. I believe it was Lily. But anyway, um, I don't really have anything to add. Um, I think that, um. Just to say that, um. The, the condition of getting this, um. Undergrounded, uh, prior to obtaining the, uh, prior to, uh, getting the, uh. Permit for grading and, um. Uh, makes it very difficult for the owners as, uh, we understood, um, that we would have to have. The permit as soon as we, uh, the grading permit, as soon as we got the permit approved, where. It's taken a long time, but we're about a couple of months away from getting the permit and, um. For, for them to proceed with the undergrounding, um. Would cost them hundreds of thousands of dollars as they are, uh, experiencing, working with Edison and, um. To do that prior to knowing that they have a permit to do the project was, um. Too much for them to take on that financial risk. So that's primarily why, um, we are approaching that, but as well as, uh. Coley mentioned, uh, the logistics of, of trenching and, um. Uh, the foundations and grading and things would work really well. Coordinated with the same contractor to do the trenching for the underground. So in terms of logistics, that made a lot of sense for us too. I do have one, uh, last question for the, um, the change in the item eighty-five. Um, I believe, uh, looking back at that, uh. Coley, you mentioned it was going to say power lines undergrounded prior to final planning inspection. Um, can you, would you mind clarifying what planning commit, planning, uh, inspection means?
Okay.
Or I thought, I thought that I, I had asked for, uh, prior to final grading inspection, but. Maybe I'm not understanding clearly what the planning, uh, inspection. At what, what point that occurs?
The document actually did say grading and I think I just missed, um.
Oh, okay.
Planning.
Okay.
Okay.
Actually is a later date.
Yeah, to, to answer the question, uh, planning, planning has very few. Um, times in which we can verify conditions. So one is prior to conditions. Or excuse me, prior to the issuance of permits and the next time is prior to a final inspection.
Okay.
The final inspections is at the very end of construction. And so yes, it does give you a little bit more time, but that's the only time that the planner is out there to verify, uh, that the conditions are in compliance.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Uh, Mr. Hakamori, do you have more to add here or?
No, um, I, I would be happy to answer questions if anything, if you have any questions, but I'm, I'm done. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, so we'll bring it back to the commission and, um.
I'd, I'd like to make a motion to, uh. Uh, accept, uh, pass it as presented by staff with, uh, the clarification of. Whatever the, what was the word you were going to use? Language in the, uh.
Grading.
The what?
Grading instead of planning.
No, 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 the, the clarification of, uh.
The extension.
The extension.
Is that a, is that a, does that go in the resolution or is it? I just want to make sure the record's straight. So my motion, accept it and whatever you have to do to make the record straight.
So what staff would do is we would add a recital. Or insert a recital, I should say. Um. Uh, we would replace recital B, uh, bump everything down a letter and we would, uh, looked in our database and we can state that on. Um. July thirty-first of two thousand twenty-one pursuant to AB fifteen sixty-one. An eighteen-month extension was issued to the project and its new expiration date would, is, uh, February sixth, twenty twenty-three.
So Richard, we, we know now that, that in fact, uh, extension was issued. It's, we're not just relying on the state eighteen-month thing.
Correct. What happened is the applicant did file for an extension. And they paid the extension fee. However, because of the state bill, we refunded him, uh, the, uh, the applicant, we refunded the money. I don't know if it was his or the owner's, but it was refunded and we did issue a letter pursuant to, uh, fifteen sixty-one, AB fifteen sixty-one. Yes.
So my motion is to approve the project with Richard bumping it down and putting in the. The, whatever we just read.
Okay, before we perfect a motion here with a second, uh, I have a question for Patrick. I've been told in the past that we are required to review prior hearings. On the, in this case, we would have had to look at the twenty eighteen video. Otherwise, we need to recuse. Is that not accurate? But what is the, what is the rationale on, on, uh, what our duties are as commissioners regarding, uh, study of past hearings?
And so, I mean, for, well, this, the, the, for a, for a continued item. Yes, that is, that is unequivocally, hey, if you weren't there and you want to, uh, potentially participate. Go back, watch the entire meeting, make yourself, um, familiar with, with, with what happened.
This is not a continued, so, okay, that's, that's clear. I got that then. All right. Um, so do we have a second for the, oh, Jeff, what do you, yeah?
Well, I'll, I'll be happy to second it for the purposes of discussion because now I'm confused about what the language is going to be. Is it, is it going to be? Power line shall be underground, undergrounded prior to a final planning inspection. Is that the language we're using or, or have we gone to final grading for, uh, grading inspection?
What does it say in the resolution?
It says.
Grading.
Prior to a final planning inspection.
Well, I'd, I'd like to keep planning. It gives him more time. That way we can just not have to change the resolution.
Dennis? Okay, I, I guess I, I just got a little confused with that discussion between you and the architect and so forth about.
Yeah, but do you understand that pl- planning inspects it when it's right before certi- certificate of occupancy? So. Uh, it's, he gets, it's a better deal for him to have planning.
Is that right?
Dennis, Dennis, what's your?
I, I was gonna ask about this anyway. Thank you, Commissioner Jennings. Um. I don't think we can hang that on him to make sure on final that Edison's got the, everything undergrounded. They may not have that. I've got. A customer over here on Albina Del Mar and it took them over two years to get his underground and they still haven't moved the poles and it was supposed to have been done four different times. So if you're gonna hang that on. These people and they can't move in or they, whatever that may be, I don't think that's, that's, that's fair. I, I, I guess without undergrounding. They can't get their power. They can, I don't, I guess that's a problem too, because you can't run off a temp power. Um. God, that's a tough, that's a tough one, guys.
They're gonna try to do with the other utilities, right? Which is the point of it?
Yeah, Adrian, what's your comment there?
Yeah, the, the issue here is that the power lines go directly across where the proposed building is. So there's no way to really build the house with the power lines there. So when we go out there to do a final inspection, we're expecting the power lines to be completely removed at that point. And, uh, the requirement was for the lines to be underground.
Can, can I interject here to two things? One, based on hearing the prior hearing, that, that to. Dennis's concern. The house won't be built without the power lines being removed because it, they're, they're too coincident as it is. So that work would have to be done before the final inspection. But the, the deeper question here is what was said in that hearing was. Edison has an easement somewhere else that's not across the middle of the property. And I just want to know, was that explored? What was the outcome of that? They, they supposedly either can go down the side of the property or across the front. Why is that not, why would, why didn't that become the default? Why are they necessarily undergrounding? And this is, I guess, for Richard or, or, or Adrian, who remember. Why, why are we still dealing with wires running diagonally across the property?
How about if we ask the architect?
Yeah, he might know that. Um. Mr. Hakamori. Uh, what, what happened to that discussion about the Edison having their own easement already?
He has to be unmuted.
Yeah. Rebecca, can you un, unmute him, please?
Um, I have attempted to.
Sorry, Pat, I was muted.
There you are. Yeah, you understand my question?
Yes, I do. Yes, um, that, that survey, uh, locating the easement, um, was done by Peak Survey for the previous owners. The Grossmans, I think, or some, something like that. And it showed an easement that was going. Along, I believe it was actually in the. Slightly into the Grossman's property, but going parallel with the, with the, uh, dividing property line between the two properties. And, um, and obviously Edison did not put the power line there. It was, um, directly through the diagonally cutting through the, uh, uh, my client's, uh, property. Um. We did not pursue that because it was, um. And maybe we should have. I, I don't know. You raised a good question, uh, Mr. Hill. But we, it was not one of the conditions on the, uh, coastal development permits, so. We were approaching it with the conditions that we were given to look at in the CDPA, uh, eighteen fifty. And so, um. And I, I think that's why it was not, uh, something that was looked at, but in answering your question, it seems like if. If the Edison is doing something that was not legally correct, that, you know, maybe that's something that we could. Pursue or look into.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me the default would have been, oh, hang on, they're not in their easement. We want to build a house here. Let's tell Edison to put their wires in their easement so we can build a house. So it seems weird that we've gotten to this point.
Yeah.
But now that we're here. Do they want to take the time and come back again and?
No, no.
You know, I mean, I, I think they would want to go ahead with what we're doing tonight.
Okay, I'm just.
Their choice, I guess.
I, I, I just, I see a puzzle with missing pieces.
Yeah, but it's irrelevant at this point, I'd say. And, and to answer Dennis's question, I can't conceive of giving somebody. A final and a certificate of occupancy with no, no electricity. I mean, what are you gonna do? Have a candle?
Well, they won't get it. No, it's not. They won't get it.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so we could, we, we, there, there are some loose threads here maybe, but I think we see the general picture, so. We have a motion on the table.
I seconded it.
So it's seconded. Any further discussion? No, not, not seeing any hands. Uh, Dennis, your hand is still up, but I.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. Uh, uh, I, I think we're ready for a roll call unless there are, anybody wants to forever hold their peace.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, do we have any, uh, other motions on the table?
I move re-adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, we've motioned in a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Maza?
Yes.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Jennings?
Yes.
Commissioner Wetton?
Yes.
Chair Hill?
Uh, as we enter the dog days, I hope everybody stays cool and has a good time and I will vote yes here.
Motion carries. You are adjourned.
Good night, everybody.